Alrighty, we are ready to roll, so we will start our morning workshop of the Clickitack County Board of Commissioners and we will start with the Public Works update. By County Engineer Sespero.
Good morning. We have few items on your consent agenda this morning. Item one is a notice contractors advertise and schedule a bid opening for Bickleton area of paintings project. Item two is a settlement agreement with the landowner for purchase a right of way along Sundale Road for our Sundale old eight. Project. And item three is in concurrence toward the bid for the Sail Barn Construction Project at the Fairgrounds. To. Hale Construction. On the construction end of things, white plastic edge lines project contractors waiting for break in the weather, we're hoping next week they can get started. With that project, curve warning signs and guide post had no start date has been established. They're still waiting to obtain the sign order, there's quite a. Long line of signs going out right now. Uh, the annual construct striping contract, the thermoplastic work begins tomorrow, that's for crosswalks, stop bars and various. Areas throughout the county. On the design end, the Bickleton area paving project, like you said, the notice contractors on the consent agenda this afternoon. Right away negotiations continue on Sunday on old date, we've seven of fifteen acquisitions have been signed and received to date. And there is a settlement agreement on the consent agenda for Google. Bridge repair bundles, we're still waiting approval from Wash Dot to uh. Receive that preliminary funding so we could start the design on those. Crushing contract, hopefully in the next week or two, we'll get that out to add as well.
Are you crushing, how much you planning on crushing? I mean, two years supply, six years supply.
Yeah, and for a project, the Sundale old aid will crush rock for that, so it's available for the contractor. And that's in three quarters. On maintenance end of things, the east end is working on that cattle pass replacement on East Road and hot mix patching. The west side, they're hauling some sand to Lyle for winter, brushing on Snowden and Glenwood areas. Grading roads and finishing up the work for the city of Benjen.
Good question, since you're talking about brushing. Harm road. Somebody like fifteen eighteen foot tree that's in the right away and somebody cut it in half about ten feet off the ground. I'm gonna assume that's a P U D thing to try to keep it out of the power wire, does that make sense to you?
I haven't heard that we did any, but.
Well, I, I mean, does that? Sound like something they would do?
Yeah.
Um, cause I'm like, I was expecting it to like be cut at the bottom, but it's just literally cut in half, ten feet off the ground and then. Half that's kind of still laying there and I'm like, well, that's weird.
Cut your one tree down, huh?
Well, there, you know, there's a few through there and they brushed most of them, but this one. I don't know, it's just, okay, don't have answers for me, alright.
No, sorry.
I just don't know why they wouldn't have taken it at the bottom, because you cut top off, you have trees, so.
And Steph, what do you have going on in Waukeahas Appleton? Have you got grading and?
Maybe grading, that's all I know.
Okay.
Up there.
I have a lot of requests.
Oh.
There, yeah.
Yeah.
Especially with Kai Kess.
Okay. Let's see, updates on facilities, uh, new services building, we're still waiting to do those graphics in the picnic table. Dale Roof, it has been dried in, we're just waiting for the contract to receive the flashing so they can finish up that project. Joan Fry Arena Doors, those have been completed. Spirit courtroom remodel, we're gonna get going on that now that the grant type of beef has been signed. Um, we have an event this Saturday on the courthouse law, it's the Faith in Blue event. Uh, Fuel Island Consultants working on the design and the radio site, say this pass, uh, still same, still on schedule, we should get the grounding done beginning October ninth and uh. Commissioning is scheduled for the twenty third. And I don't have any other items.
Thanks, sir. Um, questions from the work on this very light schedule?
No questions, sir.
No.
Thank you for the update.
Who owns, who owns that pit at the end of Waukeahas? Is that a county pit?
The end of Waukeahas.
Yeah, all the way up on top on Fisher Hill.
That was our quarry and we've turned it back to D N R, so it should still be in D N R's.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
That is a. That's true, five minutes. I think the only time they go over fifteen is when we have a ton of questions, I mean, they're usually about ten and then we question into fifteen and.
Is he so happy today? Or is that pasted on? Just have a good smile.
He's happy to be here. You don't wanna run it? No. If you're ready, sir, we're ready.
Rallying the troops. The eighteen, ready to spring in a moment's notice. Good morning.
The eighteen.
Not A minus, A plus. We're gonna start out with H R this morning and Casey's got some items that she'd like to discuss with me.
Um.
That concludes our report, thank you.
We're done.
Well done, man.
Public Works had five minutes, so if you go six, you're longer than them.
Sorry, Casey.
So we're gonna start um with the D O L overtime threshold and I kind of needed. We hand out where we're at.
Ooh, colored pitches.
Thank you. So it just kind of outlines where we're at. With the overtime threshold, um, what positions are going to be affected as far as exempt positions. Um, the second page shows where we are currently with our exempt employees and our annual salaries.
Can you, sorry to interrupt you, but um. Could you kind of give us a brief rundown of this, cause I don't know that this current board is?
Yes, so to give you a little overview, the state has implemented a sal- salary threshold implementation schedule. And they are raising um the annual salaries as far as. Who would qualify for exempt status or not exempt status, so who would qualify for overtime or not? And that is affecting um some of our employees and the grades and some of our positions within the county. And who would move from exempt to non-exempt status.
It's really started a couple of years ago when um the Obama administration was proposing to raise the salary threshold considerably. Uh, one of, you know, there's always two tests, one is salary, you have to make over so much weekly, monthly and um. During the following administration that got tabled and now it's being reintroduced by the new administration, but in the meantime, the state adopted. More aggressive or as aggressive. Um, threshold on their own, which with without the feds will give us there um and over the years it's changed. How many people will be impacted, but there's no question, it will be um a certain amount each year from now on.
So the, the second page shows what our current annual salaries are for exempt employees, the third one shows. Um, what it would be with a four percent increase as of January first of two thousand and twenty four. The yellow highlights show what. Grades and positions would be affected by that and what would go from exempt to non-exempt in two thousand and twenty four. And then the fourth page shows the employees and the positions that will be affected.
So a lot of times people ask, what's the big deal, is basically what's gonna happen is they're gonna go from salaried employees to hourly employees. And the challenge always is, and it is a fairly big deal to folks who've been salaried for a long time, that now they're hourly and so um. The cost could go up, it's, it's gotta be managed by the directors, anything over forty hours is overtime where it wasn't before. Um, there's less flexibility in the workplace um with hourly than there is with salary folks. And so I just got a thing from a uh H R firm the other day that I've worked with in the past and. Big issue is morale, cause folks who are. Used to be on a salaried position now are hourly and uh it's a significant change and it can be a significant cost if it's not managed.
So these are all going to our.
For the age. Some of them, yes, some of the positions um might still qualify for the exempt status because of their professional license in the status. Um, so we would have to go through the, the process and see if they still qualify for the exempt status. Um, but as far as the grade that they're in, then that, those positions would be affected. And it's just, it's just a. Possibility and a, a draft based on what could happen if a four percent increase were given and. What positions could be affected.
I mean, it's just a matter of time.
Does that change their, the employees, I guess I'd say, reporting of their hours? Will change anything if they move from salary to hourly and reporting of hours and?
So as far as the time sheets are concerned, yes, because um every pay period could be different. Um, you know, the salary to every time sheet is the set time, you're reporting eighty six point six seven hours every time sheet for an exempt employee. For non-exempt, one pay period could be eighty hours for a pay period, it could be up to ninety six hours. So, so it does fluctuate a, a little bit.
So there's standard rule of thumb's always been um. Generally is if you're salaried, you work no less than that, if you're hourly, you work no more than that without permission. Because every hour you work over that or quarter hour, depending how we slice and dice it is. Automatic required overtime.
You've got it, so it comes across here, but we're gonna do it just based on the pay rate, right? So it's not like you could be non-exempt year one or exempt year one and two, and then if you're year three, you suddenly become hourly.
Those are answers that we still never got, but those were things that we would have to discuss is that. If we would change the pay schedule according to that, like if we would draw lines. According to where the thresholds are, or if we would just take those grades out. Like if it, if it's affecting grade sixty seven, one through eight, are we gonna, or one through seven, are we gonna just take out one through seven? And leave in grade sixty seven and leave grades eight, nine and ten? I mean, those are, those are all possibilities that.
We'd have to look at, you, you'll have people doing the same job, just been here different times, one salary, one's hourly. What's the impact, is there an impact, is the impact morale, is the impact productivity? I mean, I think we'd have to look at all of those kinds of.
I don't see how you could do that, cause you'd have two people working the same job in the same classification, one person's been here longer, so they're hourly. So then you're gonna make the person do all the overtime work on the other one. Yeah, I, I don't see how we could, we could in fairness do that.
Well, and the other things that were discussed previously too were to take away the. The, like if it's affecting steps one through five, take away steps one through five. And so then those, those people, if they're in steps one through five, then they would be moved to step six and then it would still be within that grade, but. But they would still stay in the exempt status and so it, so there's, there's a lot of moving parts as far as.
Don't disagree with what you said, we just don't know what the, what the government's gonna give us as guidelines, is it our discretion or is it not?
So it still hasn't been implemented then?
Um, as far as what would, what employees would be affected, we have not had to and so.
But twenty twenty four, we will.
Yeah, we will, we will need to.
Unless they kick the can down the road one more time, because they've.
But this, no.
They're not.
The state.
Yeah.
Feds might, the state. Is not kicking the can down the road.
No. This is set, this will be implemented as of January first at the sixty nine thousand two hundred sixty four dollars. So it's just gonna be a matter of if colas are provided and then where that puts each employee and how it's going to affect. Grades and employees and.
So.
What we do to.
So how are we gonna get a, an answer from that on whether it's going to affect the individual steps or it's based on step one?
I'll have to contact them and get some answers.
Okay, and or a, a P A opinion request based on what, depending on what kind of answers we get from the state and. And um run it through legal counsel and see if it's something we have discretion, should we or do we? And what's the pros and cons, so. So it's been a series of near misses over the years and I think. But that's gone. So. So we will have to. Reclassify some folks, sit down with the directors, explain the difference. Um, expectations, how to, you know, um, because it could have a serious budget impact if it's not managed. So. Any questions? Start off with the good news. I suspect you'll be hearing about this from us. On a regular basis till the end of the year.
Um, the next is the C P I, so the August C P I has been um. Out and it came out at five point four and so uh eighty percent of that would be uh four point three for us. So um, that was posted a couple of weeks ago. Um, I do have a copy of all of the.
Then remember it's. Eighty percent of C P I, not exceed four percent.
You have a copy of the.
Yeah, my worry is what they. Their first proposal on the contract. Next time.
Here is a copy of the pay schedules for all of the um. Pay schedules under the contracts, so it kind of gives you an idea of where we're at. Of what is going to be given for increases. For all of the union employees. So with the eighty percent at the four point three, um, then. Based on the negotiated um wages, everybody will get that four percent increase, so that just kind of gives you an idea. Of where we're at for all of the. Contracts. What was negotiated for wages for two thousand and twenty four. I think everybody was based on the eighty percent up to four. Any questions on that?
I do not.
And I think to follow up to that, which is what Jen would ask is her only issue on our update today is um. Is that the board's intent to extend that four percent to non-union and elected? Um, which I think we discussed in the budget and I think the money was set aside, but we, we. Need to know if that's gonna be the case, so we can start moving forward with one, letting folks know and. And um putting all the salary charts and getting them updated for the first of the year.
Opinions?
I think we planned for it.
We budgeted for it, we planned for it, um. We better hope we don't fill all of our positions that we're gonna be at the creek.
Yep.
And we'll bring a resolution forward, let's do with all of that, we just needed to.
I'm just glad we only budgeted for the three point five, right?
It is three of three point five, what did, what did we set aside the dollar?
Four.
Oh, I thought we.
Plus, I think we decided the difference between three point five and four was only like twenty five thousand dollars and as we got going through, she just left. Okay.
Ee-haw.
All right.
It's magic.
Yep.
Hey, so we got the two thousand and twenty four PEB rates for our benefits. Um, it's an average of a four percent increase for our premiums. Um, so it is nothing like it was last year as far as the increases and.
What was the percent last year, you remember?
I think it was almost ten across the board and so um the difference for employee is three point seven eight percent. As far as increases in employee and family, it's four point three six, so, so it averages out to about four percent increase. Um, as far as coverages, there aren't a lot of big changes, there are some minor increases for um deductible and stuff for the H S A, but.
What's H S A?
The health savings account, the high deductible plan, medical plan. Um, but there aren't any new medical plans or dental plans that it's kind of all. The same as, as what we currently have. So very, very small increase.
Casey has a tried and true road show for, where she'll go meet with employees about. Changes to the benefits and those kind of things and takes a lot of her time in the fall.
Yep, PEB will be offering some open enrollment training that I'll be attending in a couple of weeks. To go for everything that is uh updating and changing and then open enrollment will be in November. For our employees.
What percentage of our employees actually take advantage and change? Their enrollment. Every year, change their stuff? Ten percent, thirty percent, fifty percent?
I mean, change plans.
Yeah.
So we probably with employees independents, we probably cover um like five hundred and fifty people. Um, and we have. Over twenty people on the flexible spending account, so those people have to re-enroll on an annual basis. Um, there are people that remove and add dependents, there are people that change dental plans. Um, I, I, it kind of varies year to year.
Less than half?
Yes, definitely less than half, but um it, it's. Yeah, a lot of inquiries as far as, as what can change, I know last year. Um, when they included the PEB select medical plan, a lot of employees did change to that just because it was lower monthly premiums. So the employee and family coverage was a, uh. It was a, wasn't as big of a hit to the pocketbook as it was the classic plan, so.
This is the time of year that PEB tells employees what um prescriptions may or may not be covered or they get moved from tier one to tier two or. The other way around or certain procedures or things that they may cover, not cover, or they're adding to the plan, so. Always a little bit of change.
They cover life, like the Boise, so I'm, I'm very happy about that.
They cover life light as long as it's medically necessary.
Which there was an argument on whether it was medically necessary because I didn't get a pre-authorization, I didn't wait until Monday to get a pre-authorization. So it was, it was very interesting, yeah.
Any other questions about the PEB rates or anything? No? Okay. Um, so employee training, um, I have to admit with COVID, we um kind of. Lost track of some of that and so we are in the process of getting back into the swing of things. We have offered uh some on-demand bloodborne pathogen training, as of right now, we've had a hundred and five employees attend that. And get their certificates for that and we are also in the process of getting some. Um, annual sexual harassment training and customer service training that we'll be able to provide for employees. Some of it will be virtual, some of it we're gonna try and do onsite and um get back in the schedule of. Providing that sort of training every spring and uh fall for our employees, so.
And working with W C R P.
Yes, W C R P is providing that training for us. And they have been wonderful to work with, they, I think they have a lot of online opportunities as well that we'll be able to do some on-demand training for employees and so it'll be, it'll be a good program.
It's another kudos to W C R P, you've heard from the sheriff's office, they, they are utilizing. Most if not all of the different training opportunities that W C R P is train the trainer, uh, virtual. Shooting. Machine that goes around and all the different kinds of, uh. There's a more technical term for that, can't think of it, shooting machine. But the, but the sheriff's office has been really great to send deputies and corrections officers to that training, so, so kudos to W C R P for. For delivering on all that for us.
Yes, yeah, and then we will also be um using their de-escalation training and appropriate professional workplace behavior training, so. It'll be good to be able to provide that for all of our employees.
Yeah, that one, I can see benefits out of that one, so that's good.
Definitely. Um, one last thing.
I might need to take that training too, so remind me. De-escalation training.
I will put your name on the list.
There you go.
One last thing um that I just got, where did I put it? My list, they announced the minimum wage for two thousand and twenty four and it is going up to sixteen twenty eight. Um, the minimum wage in Washington State for two thousand and twenty four, so it is going up three point four percent.
What is it now?
Fifteen seventy four.
Do I have anybody at or both?
So that will affect our um. Flaggers and our. In our election.
But more things for H R, one, um, I have the Proffman contract, it's been approved by the P A, I didn't get it, I, I didn't get it done, time to get it. For today, but it'll be on your consent agenda for next Tuesday. One thing I wanted to discuss with you because we're ready to post it internally, but I need the salaries to be the same. Rothman strongly suggests we post it at the full range, not through, not steps one through something. And that we post it with an asterisk effective January first, so now you've approved the four percent. They would recommend that we bump that up, cause they said there's no way you're gonna get somebody on board before January first, so. And, and, and there'd be an asterisk, so if we did, it would be the current wages, not the January first wages.
Yeah, as long, I, that's where I was going, as long as you had something in there that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We just need to. Throw the biggest net we can and, and the, and the reason I uh asked Casey not to post it internally, I was, I didn't want to have two sets of salaries and confuse applicants. So if you're okay with us posting the full range at the January first, which is four percent above what it is now. With the asterisk so that in very clear that nobody would get that prior to January first, if we were lucky. Um. Then we'll get it posted and I'll get the contract to you next Tuesday for your approval.
Works for me.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And then finally for H R, just want to acknowledge that um uh. H R is buried under public records request, I think we have four significant requests. Um, and Casey and Elizabeth are working on a daily and it's just takes, as everybody knows in the county, takes a tremendous amount of time. Um. Going through these um and getting them prepared and so I want to acknowledge that Casey and, and Elizabeth are working. Diligently on that and I, I think Casey would join me in thanking Rebecca, Deputy Prosecuting Attorney for all of her guidance and assistance, she's invaluable. We're, we're putting these together for law firms and, and um other. Other folks, so um just wanted to acknowledge that, so I know everybody else is buried in under them too, but um. So I think that's it for H R, unless you have any questions.
I don't.
No.
No, no, thank you, Casey.
Thank you, Casey.
Oh, one question.
Oh, no.
Here's.
On the list, it shows people at level one hundred?
Those are union levels.
Okay.
They're still exempt, so it's salaried, like supervisor position.
Right.
So they were, they were bumped down.
So that's just like a fill-in? When you, you see one hundred, I was like.
Yeah. Yep. Those are, those are unions. So they're outside of our pay schedule. They don't have them in breaks.
Got it. Thank you.
Then you had your question answered, Jen. Do you have anything else? Yes, Jen, Jen, we'll see you later today.
Randy?
You know, Jeff, Jeff Roy used to sing a song to the missus. I think it's that time he sings.
There was a dance once quarterly too. No dance?
No singing?
You know, we're in a public forum.
We do.
Nobody wants to say that.
Stock puppets, no?
All right.
All right, um. Let's see. So what I want to do is update you on the network redesign. Um, so here's what's been completed so far. Uh, the, uh, um, the very first thing we had to do is give, uh, right systems access to our, to our, uh, network. All right, that's done. Um, and then they, uh, they came in and they installed, uh, uh, a network monitor, excuse me, uh, logic monitor server. Um, and they gave us access to it. So we have, we have, we see everything they see. Okay, um, they added all the devices, all of our network devices, switches and whatnot to the, um, to, to the logic monitor so we can actually monitor them. Let me see. Uh, they configured the network devices to talk to the logic monitor. That was all, you know, that was all legwork needed to be done. Let me see, they downloaded and reviewed all the, um, the equipment inventory, uh, in the logic monitor. They're, um, they're looking at it. They, um, they, they updated the, um, the switch configurations and then have reloaded them into, and this is all switches. So far we've, it's all we've worked on is switches. Okay, um, so they've uploaded the switch configurations, um, and, and they shared how the county IT staff acts or, uh, asks for assistance, uh, basically their help desk system. They shared their, their help desk system with us. Uh, so to do tasks, um, that's on the week of the sixteenth, which is what a week and a half away. They are going to, we've got five new switches sitting in the, um, sitting in the room. They're gonna, they're gonna come onsite. They're gonna configure those switches onsite and then they're gonna install them. It should be, they, they set aside three days. It should only take two days, but they wanted the third day just for, just for overlap. Um, you see, they haven't created a new network diagram. They're waiting for, they're waiting to get everything done before they do that. The other thing that they need to do is, um, is the firewall configuration and add the automatic failover that we've, that we've talked about. Um, that is going to happen after the week of the sixteenth. That's the last thing that they've done on there. They've basically what, what their, what their, uh, uh, approach is, is to get all of the internal infrastructure um, in place and, and configured. And then they're gonna go to the perimeter, which is the firewalls. And they're gonna work on that. Um, they are, we do have a firewall. The, um, the county has had a firewall that they are going to configure and install at the fairgrounds. Um, that's part of, of this. Um, let me see, so after everything is done, which it should be, it should be done within a couple of weeks. Well, I'm, I'm gonna give them three weeks, um, to, to have everything done. After that, uh, we're going to have a monthly meeting with our, um, with our account representative. And that's just kind of a, to touch base and to see how things are going. Because, you know, we've always got access to their help desk system, but to touch base, see how things are going and, um, and then we're gonna do a quarterly business review meeting with them. Um, and that's, that's gonna be a, a, a lot more formal. Um, and that's, that's pretty much where we are.
You, you might be wondering why, why we're giving you so much detail. You know, this, this contract, this work, there's a lot of discussion about it. We've had the system go down for an extended period of time. So we think it's important that the commissioners know what's going on with this vendor. Um, uh, and that, uh, everybody knows that, that we're working on this, trying to, to mitigate, to reduce the risk as much as possible of future, future problems with the county. So we, we felt in this case we'd be a little bit more, um,
Transparent.
Transparent than we would normally with a vendor doing, you know, buying the curtain kind of stuff. We think this is important, important for you and important for the, for the departments and offices.
And that was the detail, the detail.
I know, but it's more detail we usually give.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. Um, and then I, I, I kind of wanted to touch base on the, um, the cybersecurity plan. Um, and, and I think I've, I've sent everybody, uh, this is kind of a, a rehash of, of the emails that I've already sent out, but we're in a public forum, like I said earlier. And I think this is a good place to, um, to, to say it out loud. Um, let me see, it seems like every meeting, everything I attend, everything I read in, in IT, everything always seems to come back to, uh, cybersecurity. That is the hot topic of the day, as it should. Um, and what I'm hearing over and over again is the number one, the number one, uh, weak point in cybersecurity is social engineer. Um, it, which is basically, you know, a bad actor gets, gets personal information from a person and, um, and uses it to infiltrate the system. I'll give you, I've got three examples here if you wanna, if you wanna hear about them. Okay, so number one, two thousand nine Stuxnet. Um, have you heard of Stuxnet? Okay. Um, and basically what that was, was even though they haven't publicly admitted it yet, the CIA created a, uh, a, a virus to go into Iran's, Iran's, uh, nuclear si- system. Well, their nuclear system was, uh, was air gapped, which meant it had no, uh, electronic access from the outside to the inside. Okay. Well, what they did was, what the CIA did was they found five engineers that worked there every day. And they, and, and they carry, uh, uh, thumb drives home with them, put them in their home computers and, and do work in the evening, and they go back the next day and put it back in the system. Well, but what they did was they, what this, what, what the bad actors did, which everybody knows CIA, they.
May or may not have been.
May or may not have been.
The CIA is now.
Went back. Yeah. They're listening. It's public. Yeah. Anyway, um, the, what the CIA, what they did was they infected their, their home computers. They put it in there. They, they brought it in and they, uh, they infected the, um, they infected the plan.
Not that we have any employees using thumb drives.
No, that doesn't happen here. Anyway, um, the next one was North Korea and Sony Pictures. Um, that was, that was a lot more, that was a, a spear phishing attack. And what they did was they targeted certain departments and they sent, they sent, uh, bogus emails and they get so many people to, to click on them. As they do, it, it gives them a little bit more access, a little bit more access. And, um, and, and they were able to get malware and they're able to pull the information. Again, what they did was, was social engineering. They found the right people. They, they targeted the right people. Okay. The third one was, just happened a few weeks ago, was, uh, Caesar's Palace. This is the one that scares me the most. Okay, you know why? Because it was done by teenagers. Okay? Um, basically Stuxnet, there was, there was an objective, there was a clear objective. And, and I don't believe the CIA would ever care about Clicktack County until now. And, uh, but, um, and the same with North Korea. I don't think North Korea cares about that county either, but teenagers, they don't, their objective is, is the challenge. And the challenge, the challenge that, that's represented is, is can I get in, right? They're the people that, that I would be, that I am most concerned about because they're, they're gonna be the people that are gonna see Clicktack County as a, as a challenge.
Wasn't there a recent?
Caesar's is the only one I don't know. What was the story of that?
Okay, so, um, so what happened was people would call the help desks, call the Caesar's Palace in Las Vegas, call their help desk and posing as, um, as, as an employee and obscured, and they've got thousands of employees, but they would pose as a, and they would say, hey, I need, I need access, um, you know, I, um, I forgot my whatever and I need access. And they, and they would pull information that way. And then once they got enough information, then they, um, then they use that information to go inside. Okay, um.
Their county recently had ransomware?
Yes, Benton County. I don't know much about that, not enough to really speak of, but I had heard, and that's right here in, in Washington.
Cause Randy participates WCRP, as you know, we, we're part of the cyber, uh, crime coverage and, um, Randy participates. I think they have a monthly or quarterly cyber meeting with all the counties, with the, all the counties in the pool to talk about these. Um, in Benton County, we all got an emergency email asking if we had any suggestions how to help them because, um, they were in a tough spot.
So, yeah, and so, um, you know, you, you might say for, for this, you might say, well, background checks. But you know what? The people that they're, it, it doesn't work because they're innocent people that they're, that they're using. Um, so really, the number one way is, is, is employee training. Um, you know, and we do do that. We do have the employee, right now it's voluntary, whether or not they choose to.
That was my question. So we get the, um, phishing and expedition tests and whatnot, which, which I do because I, you know, I'm not above what we tell our employees to do. But my question is, do we keep track on making sure our employees are actually doing that training? And passing that training and/or holding them accountable uh, for that kind of stuff? Or do they just get it just, oh, I don't want to do that and?
At this point in time, we have, we have nothing saying that they have to do it.
Well, I would, I would be a fan, although I'm only one vote of three, of coming up with a policy that, um, is a little more, um, stringent.
I think, I think some organizations do this. They're on, part of their onboarding before.
It needs to be done yearly too.
Before they let an employee in the system.
This, I, I would like to have this as a future discussion because it is, I, I'm gonna tell you, I absolutely agree with you.
Incompetence by our employees not knowing and then clicking something is not going to get us out of a jam. Um, and it, it isn't that big of a time constraint. Um, I will admit, I fast forward through the videos because you can't take the questions without watching the video. But you don't, if you know the answer, you don't have to watch the whole fifteen minute video. So I fast forward and then I take the question, pass test.
You test out of the class.
There you go. Uh, but.
But you know, it's, it's everything. Some employees still don't like the duo on the phones and, um, one of the first questions in Sheriff's Carrier asked us before they would agree to take us was, do we do that? I mean, there was a shortlist of pretty key questions that they wanted to know and that's, uh, that was one of them. It's because ransomware, these kind of things, malware can be extremely expensive, uh, to an organization.
Yes. Yes, it can.
And lost time, lost.
So if you want to not discuss this now and you want to bring it up later, that's fine. Just don't forget and don't wait too long.
It's, it's on my list. It's on my list. As a matter of fact, I, I do want to discuss it a little bit today. I want to touch on it. Um, and when the time comes, I want a deep discussion on it, but, but right now, um, so, um, so here's the steps that I propose doing. And the very first step was a network redesign. Cause we need, and I think I've, I've told you in the past, um, we, we need, uh, we need a familiar foundation. Right? And that's the network. Okay. I also want to make the, uh, make the point that cybersecurity isn't just an IT problem. Okay, it's an HR problem. It's, it is. It is. It's an HR problem. It's, it's, it's a security problem. You know, drop the cyber and just talk security and now it's a different conversation. And that's really what it is. However, because it's cyber, um, it, it seems like every place that I've, I've worked, it always falls in IT's lap. Okay, um, but, um, cur- but it really needs somebody that's more security minded, um, to, to, um, to run. Um, but the very first thing is the network redesign. We need a solid foundation, a solid, you know, and we need to know, we need to know where all of our ins and outs are. Okay? Um, the next thing that we're going to do, and I've, and I've already got, I've, I've got the go-ahead from, um, the, the, um, PA's office to, um, to go, to go with, uh, cybersecurity audit with a certain, certain company. And I'll be in in the next few weeks to, um, to get your approval to go with them. And that money is going to come from, uh, emergency management. They're going to, um, they've got a, a grant, um, that I'm thinking right around the first of the year, we're gonna, we're gonna start that process of, of getting the cybersecurity audit. So with the network redesign, we've got a good foundation. We've got the cybersecurity audit, so we know where, we know where our cyber, where our, uh, security weaknesses are. Um, from after that, then what I'd like to do is, and this is where you're talking, I would like to start developing policies. Um, I've applied for a grant. I haven't got con- certain confirmation on the grant. However, the state of, the state of Washington has approved my, uh, my grant application. It just went to the Fed and I haven't heard back from the, from the federal government, whether or not, um, they've approved it. Honestly, I think that is a formality. Um, but, um, but developing cybersecurity policies, um, because if it's not written, it's not real. Um, quite frankly. Um, and, and so along with those policies, I also want, uh, the person to write a, a, a plan, a, 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 uh,
The vendor.
Yeah, I want the vendor to write a, 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 a development plan. So here's the policies. How do we implement those policies? And that's what they're gonna, that's what they're gonna do. And then start deploying, deploying it over the next few years. Now, there is a grant stream that is supposed to last until the end of twenty twenty seven. I intend to, um, to use that to its fullest, to do, to do that. Um, but the, at the heart of it, and you already, you already touched on it, at the heart of it is the policies. Um, you have to, you have to decide where you're going before you get the map out and figure out how to get there.
And right now, I get that. I guess what I'm coming from is, I guess up until today, I was unaware that we were mandating that cyber testing.
Mandating.
Uh, uh, making them take, making our employees take the cyber test.
Yeah.
Um, and so to me, that is a glaring weak spot in our cyber. And if we're gonna just wait until sometime next year to make them that makes, I don't know, to me, that's a kick in the can down the road. If we get, if we get hacked because somebody fell for a phishing between now and then, that's my incompetence for taking too long.
Um, Randy, I'll take a look at it and see, you know, I, I don't want to build it from the back forward. And I think Randy has a good plan. You know, we could talk more, we'll talk more about the timeline. See how far the work, we are talking about it. But I think getting the vendor on board would be important and.
Oh, I, I love that idea. I would just wish we could.
Yeah, jump ahead.
Jump, jump ahead. And even if we're not creating the policy, we're sending out the test in an email that the, you know, if the board so chose to do so, that the Board of Commissioners would like you to take a few minutes to take this test. Um, and, you know, they will be looking at who took the test and who didn't take the test. Um, not a policy, um, but it, it gets the can less kicked down the road.
Well, I would say most of what we're trying to do is mitigate the risk. There is nothing we can do to stop it. Um, whether it's a kid or malware or, you know, just ransomware, there's nothing that you're gonna be able to do to stop it. And if somebody wants to target you, they're gonna find a way. And when you have two hundred and fifty-five employees and you can pick your way through them. We can't even send out a single email requesting people to not reply all to everything and if they still do it, and that's a, you know, very specific direct action right there. So while I hear what you're saying and trying to reduce, mitigate the risk and all that, I also think that it's a, it's a best, best management practices. For me, it's more about when they lock our system down and use ransomware and we can't pay them or we can't find a way to pay them. Do we have backups of everything somewhere else so that we can rebuild the system when we have to?
We do.
And that's what I care about. And that's what I care about. It's the vaulting of the information that is airlocked so that we can rebuild it because in the end, you're gonna sooner or later, you're gonna get it.
Yes, but what we're talking about here is not day two after the attack. What we're talking about here is making it so difficult that we're not an easy target.
Right. And I and and I I think we're all on the same page. Um maybe we're in vicious agreement, but uh
Yeah.
I think right now we're we're very reactive and and uh this will move us to being more proactive, understanding that proactive doesn't mean that it's uh we're immune from any attack.
Right. And I I would agree that even with the trainings, that you're not gonna be immune, but if you can educate some of your employees, I mean, not everybody falls for a Facebook phishing scam sent by instant messenger, but well, a lot of people still do and it just amazes me. So.
And there's a lot we can't talk about and shouldn't talk about publicly, but maybe Randy can meet with you guys individually and talk about what he's put Commissioner Anderson's talking about is how we back, you know, when we bought that hundred thousand plus uh backup server. You know, there was a reason we did that and reason we needed one at that level and that expense. And maybe Randy can meet with you individually and kind of give you more detail about the scenario that Commissioner Anderson's talking about. So at least have an individual sense of of um.
Now, I appreciate how you've worked on this and that you're working with the vendor to bring that forward. I think you have a good plan.
But that, but ultimately Jake's right. I mean, we can, we can make it difficult and hard and be ready to to react. Um but.
Remember watching a security expert talk about, talk about personal security and 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 he was talking about a single woman living in, living somewhere and and you know, the very first thing she should do is get a dog, get a big dog, barks loud, scares people away. You know, if you can't afford a dog, get a big dog dish and write and write the and write the name killer on the side. You know, and that's kind of where we're where we're at. We're not gonna, we're not gonna um like you, the point that you made. We're not gonna stop anyone from um from from.
With intent.
With intent to um, you know, but we're gonna make us a much less desirable target.
And in the worst case, be ready to get back up and running.
Right. And that's all I'm asking you to do. The front side, but you also make sure you got back.
Yeah. What I will say is my predecessor Jeff, I think he has done a very, he had done a very good job of securing the system. He's got a lot of of the stuff already in place um that we're going to be reviewing. Um like I said earlier, what we don't have are policies um in writing. But I think Jeff did a really good job of of securing the network. Yeah.
Any questions? Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
It's important stuff. It's worth taking the time to discuss. Thank you, Randy.
Well, they sure do a lot of meetings and whatnot at this Wild Horse Renewable Energy Center. Have you guys ever heard of that? They did, they got green energy up there in their county and they made this center that, I mean, they do tourism, they do things like this. It's just like it's like half the things I look at up there held at this renewable energy center. So I had to go check it out online. But anyway.
Right. Well, you're looking at the schedule right now, but I'm gonna be attending this coming up at the end of October. Um Michelle recommended it for me and the grant is paying the entrance fees and all of that.
Michelle from Ecology.
Yes, um so she approved all of that as far as me going and paying for that. Um moderate risk waste is kind of the topic and that's the first task of the grant. So I'm gonna learn more about that. And um I'm hoping to do some projects revolving around the batteries and the paint, which is one of the sessions. So I'm hoping to learn a lot from that. I also have another workshop this week, but that one was just a free online Zoom um regarding grant maintenance.
For instance, last year, uh we had a high school white salmon um teacher, his class wanted to put together a recycling program just for batteries because they felt there was too many batteries going into the waste stream. And we just weren't ready at that time to to work with with that program. So we know there's an interest out there and and so like and a need.
Are we talking just household batteries?
Yeah, yeah, sorry. Yeah, double A's and um and even here at the county, we put a lot of batteries. I mean, we.
You guys had your own collection for a while in HR.
So that's why it's important uh that that she's interested in. Any questions about it?
Hmm no, and I like.
And we appreciate Michelle. She's been very good to uh when these come up to offer them and and let Mackenzie know and the fact that they'll they'll cover the cost and it's it'll help her in the grant that uh that we now have up and running and signed and so.
And I'm a Swanna member. That's who's putting on the workshop. And so I can kind of meet some of the other people that are members and potential resources for later.
Yeah, I would definitely recommend that uh network while you're up there. You'll get more out of the networking and those contacts for phone calls later than you'll get out of the presentation.
And the other piece of paper that was passed out is an ad that's going into the Sentinel does a calendar. And so um it's just a little ad space that we paid for last year. I just spruced it up a little bit because it was just a plain white ad and I wanted to do something a little more eye catching. Um and we work with Republic on that as well. So just thought you'd like to see it.
So um should we put on there that that should be the Golden Dale transfer station?
Uh that's just the number that Republic wanted to have in the in the ad. Um so I mean, we, I can talk to them about changing that, but that's just the information.
I just, you know, because that we have three transfer stations and you're calling one of them, you should know which one you're calling.
Well, I would, yes, it's going in what?
The Sentinel, the newspaper and.
So it's going in the Sentinel, not in the calendar or something like that.
It's going in the Sentinel's calendar that they put out. So I don't know if others, yeah, we can.
Yeah, because that goes all over the county.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good point.
All two hundred and twelve copies.
Um and then we were, we're gonna have a contract coming in front of you guys here soon. We're gonna submit that for PA opinion this week um to continue the special collection program on the plastics and the baling twine that we've discussed earlier. We have somebody that's interested in contracting with us. That's still grant funded.
Interesting. Um county wide on the basic wine or just uh west side?
Both. Uh we have the collection station here in town at the feed store and then the one at Ace Hardware in White Salmon.
Okay.
She's visited both as in frequent contact with the one on White Salmon and the one here and and.
I will take the three pieces of wood out of my garbage can full of baling twine that I just put in there. It's full. Did you go back?
They actually get a lot of twine.
Believe it or not, yeah, no, Mr. Keith Preps is uh big on baling twine recycling apparently. So, yeah.
And that's one of the reasons that we talked about when we applied for the new grant was because there had been some discussion amongst the commissioners, even the previous commissioners, about whether we should keep that or not keep that and and uh it 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 kind of had a rocky start throughout the county, but and then our fear was if we didn't do it, these collection sites would just get buried. People are in the habit now bringing it in and they bring it in on a regular basis. So and as long as they were thought it was a successful program, then then we wanted to keep it going and and uh so that's why she's been done a good job putting together a a, we learned some mistakes, we learned from some things on the previous contract and and she's done a good job of adding those into the uh as far as metrics and those kind of things. And again, Rebecca has been a big help and uh so we're real close to getting that on your consent agenda.
How big is your drop offs?
As far as like, how much can they have at a time?
Mm hmm.
Well, right now the feed store, they they called me, they're getting kind of overrun, so I'm kind of trying to get through it. Um it's up. I think the biggest pickup from last time was fifty sixty bags of about twenty pounds each. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, when it, when it was first proposed to us, I was thinking there's no way in God's creation, anybody's gonna use this. Uh but it's like me in the barn. I have one can for baling twine and two big cans for trash. And yeah, the baby thing goes in there and.
Yeah, find it in your road to teller and you'll use it.
Right. So well, and that's my other issue. When I bought the property, I swear to God, the previous owner just threw out bales A for the cows and the horses, never took the straps off. So it's like you constantly see these little pieces of twine sticking out of the dirt. You pull them and they're full of twines and it's just constant.
I can only imagine what the the drivers say when they get that wrapped around the the cats and you know, get that twine wrapped around the machine.
For them, they probably love it. But yeah, no, it's that's, that's a big issue here in town. Um blowing out of the back of people's trucks too. So. Yeah, interesting. Okay.
Don't use it to tie permitos. That's all I have to say.
No, bad idea.
Yeah, it ends up in the garden and then you find it again.
Uh and the last thing I kind of want to touch on was just my interaction with the public. Um I've just been getting phone calls about recycling and stuff. And so I've been contacting Republic about their alert systems because people, you know, say mine didn't get picked up. So I'm working on, they've added me to the list of people that get notifications and stuff isn't picked up. And so I've been talking to them so I can more appropriately answer questions and phone calls.
The only thing I would add or mention in there is that we don't work for Republic. So make sure we don't put ourselves in between that scenario, refer them off to that private business and.
And Joe's been, Joe's really a a big help because he understands what what they can accept and won't accept. And so we were talking about that. The wizard's a good tool, but I don't know, does Republic post it somewhere? Can we link to as our master list of of those kinds of things and and could, if she's getting a lot of calls and obviously there needs to be better communication. We just gotta figure out who and what and how we can do that. So. Okay. And then um uh I've been kind of leaving her alone. As she gets the program up and running, she's hit it uh uh hit the ground running. Uh recently, we've started, her and I went over the budget. She's now added to the budget list. Um I've asked her and Linda work together so she understands the AP process and the revenue process. And now that the program's, the the grant's in place, she's got her first quarterly uh review coming, not review, but um
Progress report.
Progress report and reimbursement coming up. And Michelle's uh gonna meet with her about that. So so now we're getting more into the into the the finance piece, the budget piece, the the um pay the bills piece. So she has an understanding. It's part of cross training. It's important to me that everybody know how to do something, you know, with people on vacations or when people occasionally are sick. Um and you know, not it's, things shouldn't grind to a halt when that happens. So it's important to um that she learned these things and she is, now that she has more time to.
Perfect. Yeah. No, because to me, it's not just an understanding that you're fully competent to be able to do it. Uh so train until you get there to, yeah, good.
Anything else?
I don't think so.
Any questions?
Yeah, doing good.
I think she's doing a great job. Thank you. Thank you. George?
Are you gonna say, nobody's gonna say? Say, say? So wow. From my uh B team at this point.
The code compliance A team. I was supposed to email this out and I didn't get it done. So sorry, Jake. I know you prefer to get them in the drawing. Again, as we've mentioned at the workshop, George will go through these, answer any questions. We're trying to not necessarily dive down to who the, who some of these names and addresses and that kind of thing, but just give you a sense of the kinds of things he's dealing with and how he's, how they're being resolved.
Oh, thank you. Go for it. So Click Attack County is currently seeing at thirty two open cases. Uh five cases were closed since my department's last update. Fourteen cases are nuisance with the remaining fallen under code violations. And then I broke that down into code violations by type. So two were con- uh two are construction without permit. Three are conditional use permit violations. Five are onsite sewage or failed onsite sewage. Um one is a mobile home without a permit. And one unpermitted structure. Out of the five cases, uh um five cases that were closed since my last update, three were closed to voluntary compliance. Uh change of use permit was submitted for a shop that was turned into an apartment. The approval of the change of use uh allowed me to close the case. A complaint of unsecure trash was reported in Trout Lake. The homeowner was given two weeks to clean up. Two weeks later, I did an inspection which revealed the property was cleaned up and uh retention of household waste uh had been attained. Um these property owners actually went above and beyond, which I really appreciate. They made some alterations so that this wouldn't happen again, which is always good to see. Uh a conditional use permit violation and unpermitted allegations were reported in Trout Lake. The tenant was unaware of the required permits for alterations done. Uh permits were applied for shortly due to historical use, a conditional use permit was not required. At the completion of the alterations and approval of the final inspection uh from the building department uh concluded the case.
What was the use?
Uh they are using it as a venue. And then uh property in Centerville received allegations of multiple recreational vehicles placed on or placed and being occupied on a parcel. The homeowner was contacted, which she granted me permission to enter the property for inspection. Uh a recreational vehicle at the time of the visit was recreational vehicles at the time of the visit were unoccupied except for one uh which was used by the homeowner. Allegedly, she um live, she lives outside of the country and only stays there for a short stay. Hookups were inspected and uh I didn't find any violations, so I closed the case. Allegations of unpermitted onsite sewage installations were reported and investigated with assistance of the health department. Um and uh the claims were verified to be unfounded.
I'd like to stop and, you know, and all of these, George is working with all the various departments. Kudos to public health. Um Avery has went out on some of these um visits with George. Um Kavanaugh, David Kavanaugh is is um Will on the other end of the county if necessary. We have a meeting this week with with David and um Avery and Director Quinn to talk about a case. So I think George is working very well with the department's public health on these, you know, these more serious ones they partnered and um they're going, it's easy, it's better, it's a better case if if they're, they go together and they see it or don't see it, so they can deal with it. And I think that's been very effective and and I appreciate the public health department's uh cooperation and assistance and.
Yeah, of course. Uh when time allows, uh which I do appreciate the health department going out with me on short notice. Um I did attend a three day conference in Leavenworth, which was beneficial to my department's success. Um I'll touch on that after I'm done with uh the roll off containers, which I did receive six starting in October first. Um I also received two hundred transfer station vouchers uh which were allotted to my department also starting October first.
Uh we had a great meeting with Republic with Zach and I think his name's Zach, right? And Steve Gilmore. Um better part of an hour, they co-branded the the vouchers themselves have Republic wanted to co-brand that, have their name and our name on that. And it's important to to them and to us that we track those. And so there's a upping a way to track those. So um and the roll off containers, they're very flexible with those. Um um you know, I mean, if they said, look, if you haven't used all six of them in September and you need two for one project, you know, we can, you know, they're just trying to be as flexible as possible and and uh for instance, if we um used all six, but we needed an extra one in the month of October, they're they're gonna do whatever they can. Certain times of years, they're easier to get. They're really urging us not to use them or schedule them in the summer because they're in demand in the system. They also realize that sometimes we can't avoid that. So they're really being as flexible as as possible with those roll off containers. And they said, look, sometimes you need a forty yard instead of a twenty yard. If we have one, we'll fine, we're not gonna worry about it. If we, instead of two twenties, we'll give you a forty. If one's available, one can be scheduled. And they've given George the contact name and number who deal with directly. So we're not going through a lot of bureaucracy to get these things scheduled. So.
Well, that was the question I was going to have is um protocols or procedures that they gave you to how to schedule a roll off and did they give you any time? Did they give you any timeline on how long you were gonna have to wait for when you made the phone call to when you got the roll off?
So essentially, they uh, we're, we're just gonna be placed on a queue and then they'll get to us as as they can, but uh. We, we're not gonna be preference from my understanding, we're just gonna. We let them know in advance and then whenever they can get to us, they'll get to us, but.
Which is why they urged is if we can do it and avoid the summer months when they're most needed. Uh, it it's it's easier, but again, you're not gonna pull one off a paying job, uh, so to speak, um, so.
But they, um, there was questions about uh, placement and you know, if I had to be there to. You know, pinpoint where the connects is or uh, sorry, the roll offs had to be. Um, and they're essentially taking care of most of it, I mean, realistically, uh. Yeah, they're doing all the hard work, I've just.
Yeah, the only thing I would add for potential like, just vision down the road. Um, when you do call the order rail roll off. Uh, try to make some kind of notes or spreadsheets so you have your own data so that you can come forward to us and say, you know, we did five roll offs this year. I ordered it on this date, it was delivered on this date, they picked it up on this date. Because if, if for some reason we're not getting them, I need, I'm gonna need to know times. So I would just start with that right off the bat, um, and and be able to have your data, so.
They also brought up good points, which I hadn't foreseen, which is uh, that people will ultimately try to stick things in the roll offs that. They're not supposed to put in there, so um, I didn't, I didn't think about that beforehand, but it is. You know, I will give the property owner essentially a, a page or two of. Items that aren't allowed in the, in the roll offs, um, which can cause, you know. Issues down the road.
I mean, we talked about George had an idea, um, maybe dropping one in a certain community and leaving it for a weekend or something. And they said they learned the hard way, you'll get eighty yard stuff on a twenty yard container and it'll be everything you can imagine.
So it's full paint, yeah, so.
So.
I, I would, um, not to cut you off, Rob, I would like to, uh, I, I would. Like to still do that, but maybe, you know, during business hours or I could just stay there or come in during the weekend. Where essentially we could be rea- uh, react or, excuse me, proactive instead of reactive to, you know, communities getting out of hand. There is issues and I would say Clicktack and Wishram where. I'm not sure exactly why people aren't, you know, uh, uh, transferring their trash, but if we could just. Maybe once a year, if we don't have any allocations for the roll offs, just be a a last uh.
But you also have to understand that in those communities, they also have a cleanup day where they have roll offs. And they can deliver their trash, so I would, me as one vote of three. Uh, would be opposed to that because the purpose is to get houses that are already out of compliance and not. Just using it for someone like me who doesn't wanna pay my thirty seven dollars at the dump today. So I'm gonna go to your roll off because it's free.
Yeah.
I, yeah, I, I, and we were just talking about some of these, I mean, I think Wishram has reached out to to him and to other departments, you know, on the.
Wishram have a cleanup, does anybody know?
I don't think so.
I don't think, I don't think.
That's why he was talking about.
Yeah, that's.
I think they want one, there's, you know, I think we, haven't we heard they they're trying to expand their, a park and a ball field and there's a lot of things going on and I, and um. People have told him from Wishram, you know, a community cleanup, so I think that's kind of.
Yeah, but that's, that's a separate deal though, because they have a, Republic has a grant application. That Wishram can fill out to get containers just like the rest of us have done, so my, that's my point, we only get six. Um, I really wanna use those for those just trashy houses that we can't get cleaned up.
And the bad thing is with some of those I've seen in the past is they get used to having that cleanup, so they're just gonna store it in the backyard.
And that happens too.
One thing I did mention during uh, McKenzie's report, um, that would, that works under either their reports. Is as we talk and I've asked McKenzie and George to sit down and Joe, um, you know, there's a commonality here between what they do and that's trash. You know, garbage recycling, keeping things out of the, out of the waste stream. Um, which also includes um, Courtney and Sandy and the, in that department. So there are times like community cleanups where they all kind of work together, there may be other things, may, you know, maybe a cleanup at large. Property cleanup where, where McKenzie and Joe can participate because we are gonna have to separate out things, paint. And other things to keep out of the waste stream and and it may qualify for what we're trying to do in the ecology grant, it will qualify for what he's doing. And maybe if it's planned in advance, the litter chrome, just throwing this out, not necessarily a property cleanup. When we can all work together and multiply the force, so to speak, I think they're all kind of working on the same product. And there may be an opportunity down the road, for instance, McKenzie um, saw a grant, I think. That may have, that may um, work for Courtney and Sandy's programs from ecology, she was gonna forward that overnight called Courtney. So as, you know, as we all work together, we have separate deliverables, but basically they're all funded, most of them are funded by ecology. Or the landfill, and so I I think there's times where, on the ones that we have time to plan out, they can, they can work together. And um, like they do on, on the community cleanups now, I think we can, um, sometimes people just need help. So these are all tools at our disposal.
Well, and once you get your. Your, your system in place. Um, I think even a call for volunteers, you know, on a Facebook or whatever, or nonprofit group or. Um, you know, volunteer connections with the seniors down there, if it happens to be a senior house. Um, we'll be able to get the boots on the ground. Yeah.
I, I, I told McKenzie, I appreciated her looking out for something that might benefit Courtney, sent to them to let her be the, let them decide if it's. Worth considering or not and and um, for them all to work together on these things and Joe's been very good as well. And he understands the transfer stations better than most, so.
And one roll off was already offered to a property owner, uh. One of our code compliance cases, so um.
How are you going to determine who gets a roll off and who doesn't? I mean, is it's. I don't know, what's your, what's your rationale for who to, I mean, is it gonna be a, a pending long term case, you can't get compliant, you've offered this, you've offered that. It's not working here, have a roll off, or are you just, is it gonna be, I don't know, how are you gonna?
And in my opinion, it would, or at least, you know. At, at the end of the day, it's down to the board on which way they want me to go, but. Usually if, if the property owners are having financial difficulties or are elderly, then I'll offer them a container or if um. It could be an avenue. Essentially, in the, it could also be. Something that could help us in the courtroom where we could say, hey, the county offered, you know, this person the last effort. On like essentially, we, we've tried to negotiate with them cleaning everything up voluntarily and then. A last, last chance and, and I'll throw in a, a free container and if they don't bite, then we could move on to something else. Um, but.
I suspect there's an element of, if George thinks it's gonna be effective, we don't wanna waste them.
Yeah.
Right, well, and if they make sure they have twenty yards trash or not, six yards trash, you know.
Yeah, and lastly, I mean, if it affects not only the property, but also neighboring properties, then. Uh, I mean, it really depends, there's no, that's the most government answer ever, but it depends.
No, no, I, I get it and I'm good with that.
Anything else? You wanna talk about the workshop? You said you were gonna talk about that.
Oh, the, uh, I was gonna talk briefly about the training in Leavenworth, so. Again, going back to the, it depends, um. I did go to the training with kind of. Wanted to see how other counties, uh, where, where code compliance falls under in other counties and I just. I just left. Completely still, I mean, it depends, really, and there's, there's just.
When you see one county, you see one county.
Not so bad, are you?
I come around asking and like, people are under public health, uh. Um.
Sheriff's Office.
Yeah, the sheriff's office, police department, uh, there's uh, natural resources, human uh, development. I mean, there's really no answer and it was all like, well, it depends, we do it because of this and so, yeah, code compliance is. Yeah, I. Rob, Rob's gonna.
There's no one size fits all solution for anybody.
So.
George is able to say, you think that's bad, I'm under HR. I got you, I'll be.
Yeah, I was the only one in the chart, I'll say that. Temporarily, temporarily.
Well, I, I hope you agree, I think George is doing a great job, his heart's in voluntary compliance. You know, on some of the tougher cases, we're looking at different options, again, Rebecca's been a great help. Um, we, George and I've talked a lot and, and once we cross the line into the PA's world, fines, court. Those kind of things, it has to be lined up uh, uh, and work for them, because now we're in their world. And so we're working on that, making sure we have communication open and, and we have to give them the best information that we can that they need to be successful. Or it won't work, and so we're, we're aware of that and working hard to do that, so.
How long have you been doing this now?
A year, I started last summer, I think June or July of last.
I was gonna say you're over the year mark now, happy anniversary.
Thank you.
Seems longer than George.
Right, I, yeah, a lot of people, I think, I don't know, it might be a good thing or a bad thing, people forget that I've only been here, you know, not that long. You know, I'll take it as a.
That's been a year you've been in the sunlight and not in the jail. Not that he was in the jail.
Working at the jail, not.
Okay, thank you, George.
Thanks, sir.
And then, finally, natural resources, uh, staffing, we've got the position posted. Natural resource position, just confirming that, um. And then I want to confirm the Western Great Squirrel Process letter, if you, were you gonna reach out to McClure, is, is that?
I've reached out to.
Okay, is that a go?
Uh, that is, we're going.
Okay, just wanted to check back, make sure that we were, because I know there's a, not an infinite amount of time to submit that, so. Um, I've heard two commissioners bring up, uh, I never know if it's Swissler or Swizzler. But um, it may be something you wanna put on a workshop, I've heard two of you have questions about it, wanted. And I'm not the one to, to ask, but I, um, and I know you would know that because you can't talk to each other, so. It may be timely to, to schedule a discussion about that project or not, just.
Interesting.
So, um.
Okay. I guess. God, I wanna know more.
Well, and then.
But not the time or place, so.
The lead just, you know, I got a call from, uh, last week from the. Co-lead from Ecology on the, she's project manager on the grant, asking who. The, McClure formerly attended those, Richard attended one. I don't know if he attended Friday, I couldn't get to him to see if he, there was a meeting scheduled Friday. It's Benton County has a person on there, Ecology has a person on there, and then we've traditionally had a person on there over the funding piece. So going forward and if, maybe not today, but at a workshop if you want, you know, are we gonna have somebody? Are we gonna, is it gonna be, who, who would you like to attend that, that's to do with the funding piece?
Okay.
She said, go ahead, sorry.
Is there a reason for a Tuesday over Thursday or Thursday over Tuesday?
For our workshop?
Yeah, it's matter.
Doesn't matter.
So yeah, I would just, uh, yeah, put it on. For sure, and HR.
It's probably important we participate.
Uh, Tuesday or Thursday, doesn't matter, for Swizzler discussing.
So part of that is, you know. You're gonna designate somebody to participate, I'm gonna reach out to her, um, she said her boss's boss is leading the. EIS, Environment. EIS, she's lead on the funding piece, her boss's boss of the chain of ways is leading the EIS on that project. So obviously, there's one going on, I don't know where it's at in the process, um, but there's a lot of moving pieces and I'm not sure where, where, um.
I guess the main question I'm gonna ask at that workshop that hopefully you can find an answer to is how many hours a month are we talking about?
You mean, or just.
For, for whoever's doing this or being lead entity or being whatever.
I think the only one that can tell is commissioners is uh, Mr. McClure, because I think Richard. Attended one meeting in Benton County that you asked him to early on, and then he may have attended one of these funding meetings. I'm not sure what else, I don't, I think the reason I got the call is, is we're, they know we're in transition, transition. And we're missing some of whatever it is we're supposed to be doing.
So within the grant reporting, I think Lynn has records in there in the drawer and on her computer. I think it may line out how many hours were spent and what the charges were that went back to the grant.
And I'm gonna reach out to this, I'm gonna reach out to Ingrid, I think is her name, and ask, I want a copy of the, all the funding.
Yeah, so do I.
I don't have access to it and, or I don't have it and I'm just gonna ask for a copy of it, she's, was really nice to work with. But she said, we know you're in transition, but the project's continuing, it's just continuing without.
Early reports, you should be able to get all that from Lynn.
Yeah, it's in there.
Again, I mean, it's, I, I'm not jumping into it, I just, when they call, when you call it, she calls me and says, hey, we just wonder who's gonna attend this meeting and. And who's gonna attend in the future, it's.
What, who is the organization that wanted to go on to horse thief and do a cultural survey or whatever, was that Corps of Engineers?
I'm not sure about the cultural, we, we've had BP, BPA was on there.
What were they looking for?
Um. There's a name to that big power grid that runs, the power lines that run through horse thieves, like the cascade. They're gonna expand that and so they're looking at the entire, all the properties along the line to, to, um. I think they're gonna add more transmission and so that was all part of that, um.
But this is different than the Army Corps, you know.
Yeah.
Right, 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 but I was trying to figure out if they were trying to do cultural there too.
No, no, I don't think so, uh, we didn't let them dig, we told them they couldn't dig, they said they didn't need to, they just needed to see where the old road was to see if they could handle the equipment. We will have probably in twenty twenty five, Ecology Air. Go, go horse thief, because we pay for a permit and he said he'd probably be out in a couple of years to, to, to walk the property there. So um, David Cav and I are working on the horse thief, that whole process, so. I think that's, that's it for natural resources. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you, Jake, for reaching out to Director McClure.
You're a former director.
All right, um, because that was something on my list for discussion today, if we can put it on the agenda for this afternoon or. Whatever, is that Army Corps of Engineers request to do cultural surveys on all over Orlando. So we need to have discussions on whether we say yes or no to that. And I don't know where we wanna. It's technically new business, so it shouldn't be board pending.
I got a, I got a list on so far to add. Anything else?
Any other agenda changes that we're thinking for this evening?
I've got, uh, the DNR transfer lands, um, adding uh, Pat Arnold uh, to the agenda. As well as conversation on the Western Pond Ter.
Yeah.
And what you just brought up.
Got it.
At some point in time, where do we put a discussion about interim management of the planning department?
Technically, it can be now, because we've already discussed that, so that's technically board pending and. Um, if you wanted it now, or we could do it later under board pending at the end of the day too, so.
Depending on if somebody else has something now at lunchtime, if they need to go, or we can move it down.
It, it doesn't matter to me, you know, if you have a preference.
Hold on, um. Um, I think we should add that to the agenda. For this afternoon.
And, um.
Gonna move it under unfinished business, I'm assuming.
And also the FSEC appeal.
Figuring those.
Good thing we have a short list.
Yeah, right.
And then you said FSEC?
Yes, the appeal.
You taking notes on where all these are going, because I'm gonna lose track.
Yeah, I've got it.
That was the other question is. I guess I can make notes when we approve the agenda with the following changes and you can tell me which ones are going where. Um, when we pass that motion, so I can keep track of the. Meeting as we go or make notes and turn your blue card over to staff and maybe they can.
So far, I have six items, right?
It's gonna get confusing to me to keep track on them with. With what, when and where.
All right, I got it. I'll make the, make the motion. All right, with that, uh, is there anything else?
I don't.
No.
Mister Chairman, I would make a motion, we recess for lunch.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to second recess for lunch back at one o'clock. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of recess, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Okay.
It is now one o'clock, we will open our, or call our regular business meeting, Clickcat County Board of Commissioners to order that we're to show all the commissioners are present, and we will start with the play of the week. And I will start by turning on my microphone, I'm sorry.
My place is to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the business agenda as presented with, uh, seven additional add-ons. Number one being the discussion with Pat Arnold regarding the Western Grace squirrel. Number two, scheduling a date with the Skamania County Commissioners. Number three, discussion of rearranging the weekly business agenda. Number four, uh, the Western Pond Turtle. Number five, the Army Corps of Engineers. And, um, number six, the D N R transferred lands, all under new business. Under old business, I would put, uh, the FSEC discussion. Um, I would said old business to after new business, um, two o'clock.
And were we adding a planning department discussion under unfinished business?
So all of these, uh, for clarifying the motion. We're, um, we're putting all of these. Under, that aren't already currently listed, under new business, and we're putting FSEC in the planning discussion under old business. Or unfinished business, sorry.
Which, which planning discussion? I wasn't on my list.
Oh, that wasn't.
I brought it up, or, yeah, I brought it up earlier.
That was what she brought up before lunch.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sure. We would add, I would take the friendly amendment to add a planning discussion under old business after FSEC.
Thank you. And I'll second.
And by old business, you mean unfinished business, right?
Yes.
Alrighty, we have a motion in a second to approve a very interestingly long add-ons to the business agenda, seven add-ons. Uh, any further discussion on approval of the business agenda with those add-ons?
Um, yeah, I would, I would ask that, um, after today, when we go to put our minutes on the, um. The, because we have so many add-ons, I'd like to put the updated business agenda. In the, the agenda section online, so that when somebody's looking through, they can see where about something is. So then they can go through the video to get, to get the information. Does that make sense? I've just.
So, um. Yeah, so, so essentially go back and edit our agenda with the changes.
With the changes, so that then you can see it, so that when you're going through, when somebody goes, hey, what about this? Then we can come back, or the public can go in and say, oh yeah, they had a discussion, and then they can go find it online. Otherwise, you'd never be able to find it.
Not a big issue easily done over there? Um, all right, we're still sitting on a motion in a second. Any discussion on approval of the business agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval with the business agenda with the seven add-ons, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I think there was a third, yes?
Mister Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the commissioner meeting minutes, um, from September twelfth, twenty twenty-three as president.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the commissioner meeting minutes from September twelfth, twenty twenty-third. Any future, any other discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, motion passed. Uh, that brings us to citizen comments. Citizen comment will be limited to three minutes per individual. Please state your name and. General location in the county for the record. Uh, please keep your comments pertinent to Clickcat County. Or things happening inside Clickcat County. Uh, we normally start in the room, but we don't have anybody in the room. So we should be able to get a three-minute stopwatch up on the screen for you Zoom folks. Um, so if you're on Zoom and you want to have a citizen comment, please raise your hand or unmute yourself. Uh, and we'll give you comments.
Hi.
Hi, go ahead.
Gabrielle Gilbert. So I want to congratulate the new barn that you approved, um, and the grant dollars that you found for, um, building the livestock barn. Um, I would hope that, uh, the children of the county would also get that kind of movement. Um, to address the childcare needs, you know, pretend they're livestock and show that you care about the issue of the lack of childcare in the county. And, and the need for resources, grant dollars or such to move in that direction. I also want to speak briefly about last month's, I mean, last week's meeting and discuss, uh, the idea that you would turn to. The timber industry to craft a letter for you that you would respond to the squirrel habitat issue that's going in front of fish and wildlife. The county elected you and, uh, you as representatives to do your work. And, and it is not for a timber industry, um, official to craft letters. To express what you want to express to fish and wildlife, and I think that that needs to be, um, readdressed. And, uh, and that you do the work. The other thing I want to talk about is that dumpster fire of a conversation thirty minutes before. Um, public commentary about the airport board. I think it's important that, uh, the women who sit in this community. On this board in the county are respected. They're respected for the ideas that they are a, a witness. And they should be respected in the information that they give to county commissioners. And when you have a commissioner in a stuck thinking pattern that spends thirty minutes on, uh, circling around an issue. That was more than explained, um, by the other commissioner, it is disrespectful. And the disrespect, um, when it comes to women who work in the county, for women who live in the county. From that particular commissioner is problematic, and you might do well, in my opinion, allegedly. To take on a training concerning misogyny, because this is what is, um, coming across on different occasions. Um, when, uh, women are presenting in front of the commission. The other thing I want to say is that when you drop a bomb, um, to make a point or to do a little nanny nanny boo boo stuff. About investigations that are happening in the county to, um, to, to dangle that in front of the community. And in other commissioner, commissioners on the board, um, that is problematic. So if you're going to drop those little bombs, I suggest that you back it up with what you're talking about, because the innuendos are disrespectful. And the county should be well aware if there are things in the horizon, and you should be upfront about that, and I don't appreciate that kind of behavior. So those are my issues that I've had in watching last, uh, week's, uh, meeting. And, um, and I hope that, again, the county commission will be respectful. It is one thing to say that you're independent in your thinking, and you're independent in the decisions you make, then act that way. Thank you.
Anybody else have a citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today? I'm seeing none. Anybody online? We do not have anybody in the room today. If anybody else online has comment for the Board of Commissioners today. Please raise your hand or unmute yourself. Mike unmuted themselves?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, sir. Name and general location for the record.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Mike, and I live here in Clickcat County. I have concerns about the proposal, proposal to install flock surveillance equipment around the county. While I understand our law enforcement's desire to have more tools to execute our duties, is our responsibility as citizens to keep our governments in check. Companies such as Flock that sell these systems of surveillance make their case by preying on our fears and promising to provide security. If we just give them some money and allow them to keep track of our movements. With this modern surveillance technology, it is much easier to keep track of citizens' movements than in the days we had to employ a Stasi agent to manually inspect subjects' travel papers. I have heard that Flock claims to not share their information with federal agencies such as ICE, the A T F, or the FBI. But even if that is actually true, I would be shocked and frankly disappointed if employees of those agencies did not find a reliable way to access such a treasure trove of data. Another claim by Flock is a promise that video is deleted after thirty days, which does not necessarily mean that a record of your travel is deleted. Once infrastructure like this is in place, it is likely only to be upgraded, and its features to become more powerful. Even if we are comfortable with the trade-offs promised today, how likely are we to remove them once more compromising, uh, features are slowly added? Another concern is that when a company like Flock is sold to another company, as often happens. The new owners acquire all the old data and customers, and generally change the user agreement. These systems are ripe for abuse and a great tool for authoritarians. Thank you for hearing my concerns.
Thank you, sir. Um, I will say I have the same concern, so. Uh, we'll eventually get to the bottom of it, uh, but thank you for your comments, sir. Anybody else online have citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners today? I'm seeing none. We will be in citizen comment for the next thirteen minutes, so if anybody does have a citizen comment, please unmute yourself or raise your hand. And we will go about, um, doing our paperwork until somebody passes.
We are still in citizen comment. Uh, if you would like to provide comment to the Board of County Commissioners, unmute your phone, star six. Turn your video camera on or raise your hand.
Sir, did I miss anything?
None of things.
Well, we will continue in citizen comment, in hopes that somebody online has. Something pertinent that they would like to discuss with us. Oh, she got agenda over there. Her agenda has three items in it. How did that happen? Usually a book. Yeah, well, it's usually consented, it's vague. We are still in citizen comment. If anybody has citizen comment, please, uh, raise your hand or unmute yourself. And I will happily stop signing road approach permits to give you the floor.
A couple of places will be here.
We are still in citizen comment. If you have a citizen comment for us today. Yeah, right.
And first, stand.
I'm seeing some new names on there. I need to make a note of this. Try to remember it for future discussion today. Alrighty, we will ask again if anybody out there has citizen comment for the Board of Commissioners. Now is the time to do so. Please raise your hand or unmute yourself or in other ways get our attention.
Just so you know, ladies, there's a microphone above you and everything you say they can hear.
I have the daughter that sent me a text and said shut your phone off and you never.
There you go. We are still in citizen comment for the next minute and a half. If anybody wants to claim that minute and a half by coming forward. I saw that hand here first and you were the first one in the room, so you can fight over the minute and a half. You were first, sir.
I'm Craig Schuster. Now I have been on the planning commission off and on for a while. And with Mochi leaving, I think that's a great disservice to our county and our planning commission. She was taught. The Kurt Dreyer, probably one of the more knowledgeable planners I've ever known. Mochi is very, very usable, very serviceable. She doesn't want to leave. It's the way you three treat her. So that's. My general comment within my minute and a half. Questions?
I. I do not.
You also have two six six two and a hand back here.
Don't know how we're gonna get him in in the next uh thirty seconds, but you got thirty seconds, sir.
Well, uh, first of all, you guys all took an oath to uphold the Constitution. And you're gonna be surprised to know that there is no thirty seconds or three minutes in the First Amendment. And the thing is, is. You know, here we go over this solar thing you're gonna do on the sixteenth again.
We're not doing anything on the sixteenth, sir.
Well, I mean, Epsec is gonna hold it. But you guys, I don't even know why with all the negative impact on the integrity of this county, you guys can even conceive any kind of approval process for any solar. I mean, I, I, you should, it, two, three years ago, you should have put together an advisory board. If you guys cannot comprehend or understand. The areas that have had solar for over twenty years, the problems they are having, we're gonna have. Exact same thing. You got Chesapeake Water System that is now contaminated with the toxic runoff. Of these solar panels, the residue off these solar panels. And when you drive these pilings in the ground. You're gonna have the same effect. You're gonna, you're gonna contaminate the surface water. You've got, you're gonna be frying birds on top of these panels because they think it's water. I mean, it goes on and on and Nevada, Texas, California, UK, Australia have no idea in the world what they're gonna do with these decommissioned solar panels. I mean, and that's just the beginning over and over again, but you guys seem to ignore everything. I mean, you hear nothing, you see nothing, you say nothing. But yet this approval process should have been stopped a long time ago. You've had plenty of information on the negative impact that it's gonna take place in this county and you could care less. Apparently, you have no, you have no sympathy for the future of this county. And that's, you know, the whole thing is, is I don't know where you guys plan on live, but I'll bet you ain't gonna be here because the price. When these solar panels come in, the price of having those solar panels goes directly to the consumers. And they're gonna pay the cost plus the devalue and property tax that these solar companies are gonna pay. They ain't coming here because they wanna pay you a bunch of taxes. You're nuts if you think that. And you look at New York and some of the places, New Mexico, you look and see what kind of taxes they're paying there. Do you think you're gonna get any kind of wealth out of these things? You guys, I, I don't know. I mean, I guess you don't care about the county. You're here at the uh. Pleasure of the governor to do whatever he says. There's, there is no law that says Clickatack County has to have solar panels. And he hides behind these bureaucracies like Epsec to come and do his dirty work for him. And they are not elect, they have no authority.
Sir, your time is up.
Yeah, it's always up here.
You have two six six two online too.
Uh, our citizen comment time is over. Uh, we will be back in citizen comment next week uh from one to one twenty-five for anybody that would like to make comment. Uh, do you have any responses? The board would like to respond. Apparently, we're not gonna answer there, but go ahead. You wanna go first?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Uh, so Gabby, always good to hear from you. I, I agree, the children need more than equal time to get moving on childcare and I'm committed to. Moving forward with you, however slow it is or hard or grinding it is. Um, we have good partners and. And we'll get somewhere with it. Um. The gray squirrel letter, um, unfortunately, we don't have a natural resource. Department right now. We, we have a position open and for an answer like that, we need good partners. We need the timber companies. We need. Our associated landowners to link arms and move forward uh to coordinate an effort to push back on this. And what we need is sound science and expertise to write those letters and I'm thankful that Jason Spadero stepped forward and offered to help the county and the state we're in right now with our natural resource. Uh, we have background expertise from Mr. McClure that we can reach out to, but for in-house right now, we need everything we can get. And right now we have a big push on, um, you'll hear later about pond turtles. There was also something about grizzly bears that came across. Um, it's kind of a downhill slide right now with being able to keep up with all the things that are coming forward. Uh, and thank you for your support about last week's conversation on the airport board. I, I always appreciate you Gabby and your support for women. Um, the flock cameras, um, I know people have a lot of. Questions about those, Mike, but I for one support them. Uh, we had a situation in Clickatack County where some very bad people were picked up. Um, within twenty-four hours because of the ones that Yakima County had and we were able to catch that traffic and find those people. Um, I have children, I have grandchildren. In the day somebody disappears, I'll be glad for those types of cameras, so. I think we have to weigh our fears and concerns over what they can really do for us and um. I have high hopes for them, uh, but we'll be looking into them further. Um. Craig, I agree. Mochi is a very, very valuable planner and I was with her when she came to Kurt Dreyer and, and saw the work that he put into Mochi and trained Mochi and. And coached Mochi along and um it is sad we're losing her. Um, I think there were personal reasons there for her beyond uh the things that you quoted. Um. And I'm happy for Mochi. I hope she gets a peaceful, solid future to move forward to. She's very valuable. I'm sure she's gonna find. A place where she wants to and is happy to work. Um. And Delmer, I agree. Uh, the solar has been. A frustrating situation for me before I ever took my seat here and. Lack of due diligence and lack of planning and lack of moving forward with it for many, many years has gotten to where we are now. And it's a frustrating situation to deal with the FSEC board that was set up to go ahead and move things forward um with the governor's ideas. Uh, it's very frustrating for me to see what's happening to Clickatack County's ability to even do planning. Um, but I'll fight to bring it back to that and I'll keep fighting. Yeah, that's the best I can say. Thank you.
Um, I'll try to be fairly quick. Uh, just for clarification on the livestock barn, there was a comment that we. Are buying a livestock barn and we need to invest the same amount of county money and resources into childcare. For clarification, that livestock barn is being paid for by a. Uh, the duly fund, the estate of the duly family that left their money um to the, to the improvements of the fair. Um, so if any uh family wants to leave their inheritance to the county and. Uh, provide for childcare, I'm sure we will be uh more than happy to, to oblige, but um. It's not like the county spent one point two million dollars on a livestock barn. Um, and so just for clarification there, for Mike, the surveillance equipment of the flock cameras and government surveillance, I have the same concerns. Um, I don't know for sure if I'm the only one on this board that um. Has very grave concerns on where this is going. Uh, and yes, your government can't get in there and surveil you without permission, blah, 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 and we all believe that, right? Um, so yeah, I, I'm sorry, sir. I agree with you. Uh, Mr. Schuster, I agree with you that Moshi is valuable. I personally wish Moshi wasn't leaving. Uh, I do wish her the best, but. I guess I would also challenge you to maybe have a conversation with her. Uh, and get more information. Um, because I believe I have uh always been supportive of. Uh, of Moshi while she's been employed here and I um have plans to be supportive of Moshi and whatever her future endeavors are. Um, Dell, solar panels. Um, I understand. How frustrating it is for you. Um, it's just as frustrating for me in a different regard. It's frustrating for me that. Uh, we continue to hear the same thing from the general public who doesn't want to educate themselves on the process. To understand the process is happening under this new board. The October sixteenth is not this board. It's not FSEC. It's the Planning Commission that this board delegated to make the rule changes that you're asking for. We are in the process, but we can't do it without going there and then they get done submitted to us for approval. So while you're angry that it's taking a long time. You could do it correctly and not get sued. Time for citizen comment is over. You've had your time. You can comment next week. You can comment next week, sir. The planning commission, when they get done with their recommendation to outlaw solar in the valley, which I would remind you that I started. This board will take a vote on it. Now that doesn't mean that solar in the county is over. The planning commission does wanna look into more things into the EOZ and whatnot, but we have to get through the process we're in today. Before you can get into the next process. There's a government process and I'm, I apologize if we don't work fast enough for you. But government was set up to work slowly so that if one. Crew comes in from one party or the other, they can't change the world. And. Go against the middle of the people. Um, so whether you agree with that or disagree with that, we are going through the process. Uh, well, you can shake your head and disagree with that as much as you want, sir. Uh. Do I?
The other way. I see when the commissioners would not authorize any permits for Walmart distribution.
Could, could we enact it countywide? Absolutely. Sure. If that's what you're asking is this board to enact no solar in the entire county, you can publicly testify to that and we'll see how many votes you get on that one. Yeah, that's fine, sir. You'll have your time to speak tomorrow at citizen comment at one o'clock. Our next Tuesday at one o'clock. We will not be going back and forth. Uh, in getting into uncivil discussions. Um, with that, I will uh pass off my time, sir.
Thanks, Chair. Ms. Gilbert, um, thank you for your comments today. Um, I agree that the children of this county are very important. I agree that ensuring that there's childcare is very important. Um, I would always be in favor of trying to find funds to build a childcare center. What we have been shown uh time and again is is that it cannot be done profitably and it cannot be done in a way that does not um. Cost an inordinate amount of money and if and when we have someone from the private sector who is willing to, to take on that endeavor. I will do everything I can to try to make sure that there's adequate space in this county for them to run a childcare center. Um, in the meantime, I support all of uh WOGAP's efforts in order for people to run childcare. Facilities within their own homes and there is, people are continuing to do that. Uh, with regards to your uh asked for mentioned dumpster fire, um, I would like to say thank you very much to Commissioner, Commissioner Zoller for sitting on. The airport board. Um, that is not an easy board to sit on and working in Dallasport is probably one of the most difficult places. To try to get anything done. The amount of misinformation um and disinformation that Commissioner Zoller was speaking to last week, I think is evident. And um, I feel sorry for the way that, that she has been treated with regards to that. Um, having served on that airport board and having gone through it. Um, it really is disheartening when all you're trying to do is do good things for a community to get things done, to get projects moving forward. Um, and to have people, you know, questioning um. Uh, and asking for potential investigations into the airport board. I think it's just, uh, it, it's really disheartening to hear things like that. Um, so I apologize for, to Commissioners Oliver for having to go through that. Uh, Mike, with regards to the flocks, uh, flock cameras, um, I am looking for more information. I am supportive of the sixty-day trial that the, that the sheriff's office has. Um, cause I wanna see what results come out of that. I do have the same concerns um that Commissioner Christopher has with regards to. Privacy and the information and where that information can go and I need to know more about it before I make a, an informed decision. Uh, but currently right now, no, none of the flock system has been designed or built into the twenty twenty-four budget. And so that would have to be a supplemental budget if the sheriff's department would like to move forward with that, but I need to, I need to see exactly what it will and will. But I need to, I need to see exactly what it will and won't be used for. Um, Craig, Mochi is probably one of the largest losses that we will experience, um, over the last years and in the, in the future years. Uh, we currently have no senior planners in the planning department. Mochi has put in so many extra hours and time and she's been pushed and burnt to the end of the, her abilities. Uh, the things that the public have said to her, the things that, that, that she's had to endure, I wish her all of the best. Um, uh, in finding a very peaceful place and where she goes. I, uh, I cannot say enough good things and great things about Mochi. She has been um, one of the rocks, uh, and pillars in this, uh, community and in this building. Um, and in the previous buildings we had before this building. Um, she will be a very, very hard shoes that we will not be able to fill for probably quite some time. Um, losing Mochi is going to set us back likely years in terms of comprehensive planning and all the projects that we as commissioners and you as citizens would like to do. Um, I wish Mochi all of the best and, um, what I told her, um, uh, was is that she will always have a home here if she would like to come back. Um, Delmer, I think Commissioner Christopher said a lot of it. Um, we are working, uh, towards, uh, this process of outlawing um, solar panels within, uh, the view of the town of Goldendale. Um, what we have heard on the east end of the county, and I think what this previous board has said is, is that that's not something we want to do countywide. There are areas that, that solar panels can be sensitively cited. Um, the state is moving in the direction of more and more solar panels. Um, it's easy to get up and raise your hands and wave them and say, we don't want something. It's another thing when you're going against the entire behemoth of the state of Washington that's setting renewable energy standards by 2020 or by 2030 and 2035. It's another thing when the state of Washington is, is working on programmatic EISs so that they can streamline um, the development of solar panels anywhere they may wish that there, that, that FSEC may wish. Um, we've always said that this is one of those difficult things because in many instances with many decisions, uh, the county is the final say. When it comes to these large-scale energy projects, the, the fact that FSEC exists is to override local opposition to large-scale projects. And so you have to take that into consideration. We can't just say no. Even if we outlaw and in, in this area and we pass full zoning ordinances for the area around Goldendale, they can still go through FSEC. They can still go through the non-expedited process at FSEC in order to build solar panels. All it does is it allows them to not use the expedited process. It's one more hoop that they have to jump through. They still have the adjudication process and procedure. And that is, that is enshrined in the law that they can do that. What I have always pushed for with regards to, uh, the Carriage or project and anything that, that goes through, um, uh, the Knight Road substation is locally, if they would like to do that, that would be a CUP process. And everything needs a full EIS. And that is all, everything I have testified on in front of FSEC. Because if an EIS is required, then you have to go through the adjudication process rather than expedited process. And that is our way of getting our say with regards to these, these large-scale industrial projects. Um, until I find a way that you can actually say no and put a stop in front of, uh, the governor and FSEC, that's the world we live in. And I'm sorry that it's the world we live in. I don't like, uh, the situation any much, as much as anyone else. But that's where we're stuck. Um, if you'd like to change that, talk to your legislators because it's the legislature that creates FSEC. It's the legislature that's changing uh, the, the rules for FSEC to, and the last, uh, time in front of, uh, the legislature, they were trying to make it even more streamlined. While some of the legislators on the east side were trying to make it a little bit more difficult, but when you look at what we and, and you as the community are up against, uh, the people in the cities want this green energy and their representatives are pushing for it. Uh, so that we're going to be the ones that provide it for them. And so, you know, calling us names, saying we're not doing anything, I'm sorry, that's, it's, it's not the case. Uh, and thank you to Commissioner Christopher for explaining where we actually are with that. With that, sir, I'm going to, uh, admit that I used up far more than my time. So I'm not going to remind any, but back to you, but, uh, thank you very much.
I, I am, since you point that out. Uh, I am going to make a note that it is 1:44 and 14 minutes after our scheduled public comment time, even though we had at least 14 minutes of dead air during public comment time. And so we will have future discussion on that when we discuss, um, rearranging our weekly meeting agenda later today. Uh, with that, I do want to thank everybody for their public comment because even uh, the good, bad, and the indifferent of public comment, our hopes is that we can hear people's concerns, uh, like Mr. Mike with the flock cameras and Mr. Schuster. Uh, but we can also help educate um, people who may not, may be very angry because they don't understand uh, the process or the way things must be done under law. Um, and so we do try to use this time to educate as much as uh, the public is educating us. So thank everybody for bearing with us as these drag on a little bit. Uh, with that, we'll call it in to citizen comment. Uh, moving forward, it's 1:30. It's time for public hearings, public meetings and bid openings. The first item we have here is a public meeting to consider the final approval of boundary line adjustment BLA 2023 dash, not on my agenda. 11. Uh, in the White Salmon vicinity and we'll start with a little staff up there.
Okay. So this is a boundary line adjustment at BLA 2023-11. It's a proposal to adjust the common property lines between parcel 04113118100400 and parcel 04113118100300 off of Fairway Drive. White Salmon, the proposed boundary line adjustment is located within a portion of section 31 Township 4, range 11, Quiktech County, Washington, White Salmon. Administrative review for the boundary line adjustment has been completed. Signatures have been obtained from the road, health and planning departments and the treasurer's office. All conditions attached to preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds that it is in the public's interest to approve the boundary line adjustment, a motion will be needed to grant final approval for BLA 2023-11.
Okay. Do, uh, do any of the commissioners have any questions of staff on this boundary line adjustment?
No, sir.
I don't either.
Mr. Chairman, having before us, uh, motion for final approval of a boundary line adjustment BLA 2023-11 in the White Salmon vicinity, my motion is to approve.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to second to approve, uh, BLA 2023-11 in the White Salmon vicinity. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you very much. In turn, my public hearing procedural sequence. Maybe she gave me one. Hey, hey, we thank you for that. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Anybody know if staff from Public Works is going to be in the room for the capital improvement? Hey. Uh, next up is a public hearing in consideration of adoption of the Clicktack County Capital Improvement Plan. With that, I'll declare the public hearing open uh, and advertise the purpose of the hearing is to hear testimony for or against adoption of the capital improvement plan. Uh, does not, are you going to be our update for that or?
Yeah, I typically do, um, a staff overview for, for both the capital improvement and the budget together at one time. So we only have to do this once, but.
So you as doing one hearing as opposed to two hearings?
We have to do them too. I just do the overview as them conjoined.
Making sure I'm using the wordage correctly. All right. So I will, uh, allow you to prevent, uh, present the brief overview, if you would.
Okay, uh, the original preliminary budget was presented to the board on August 8th and was published to the webpage and printed in the office on that date as well. Uh, the board of county commissioners worked through the public, through the budget, um, rated revisions during public workshops all through the month of August. A version two, this version that we're currently having a hearing on was posted to the webpage and um, published in the office on September 18th, 2023. Notice of this hearing has been advertised in the paper for two weeks. Um, the total 2024 budget is $65,023,200 of which the capital improvement plan budget is $14,414, 328, sorry. Um, and separately from both of those, the road plan is $12,037,000.
Hey, any, um, well, I guess with that, uh, I will open the public hearing for the purpose of receiving public testimony, both in favor and opposed to the 2024 capital improvement plan. And we'll start in the room. Does anybody in the room have public testimony for or against the capital improvement plan? Seeing no hands and nobody running nor microphone. Uh, so we'll go online. Does anybody online have any testimony for, is it, uh, for or against the board?
2662.
2662. Do you have public testimony on the capital improvement plan?
I do. And that, that is the one that involves like the Clicktack sidewalks. Is that correct? And the Lyle boat ramp? I just want to make sure I'm commenting on the right improvement plan. Is that correct that that involves that?
Um, I would have to go back and look at the parks prior. Uh, it does have Lyle boat ramp. I believe the sidewalks are road and not capital improvement.
And I would just like to point, uh, the boat ramp is on 2027.
2027.
Right. But it's on the, the boat ramp is part of the capital improvement plan. I believe the sidewalks are not.
Lyle is 2029.
Clarification. Go ahead, ma'am. You have three minutes.
Okay, um, well, I, I, I read that the improvement plan that I got offline, um, did include the Cricketet, um, sidewalks. And I just wanted to say that, you know, you're always going into how much recreation and how much money it's bringing into the economy. And with the bridge toll going up, um, there's far less people that'll be coming over to Washington from Oregon. I know I limit, limit my trips over the Hood River Bridge since the bridge toll myself. Uh, that being said, the one, uh, the one thing that we have noticed in our, our, our town of Lyle is the fishing. The fishermen come in, they do eat at the cafe, they do go to the store, they go to the fishing place, Jake's Woods. And I counted over 60 vehicles, uh, just last week at the, uh, Lyle boat ramp. All the way down and all the way up the street, you know, for probably a quarter mile, honestly. Um, so having the Lyle boat ramp so, uh, far into the future doesn't make sense to me. Um, it, like I said, it's the one thing that they, they will keep coming because the fish are here. And they do help our local economy. So I would hope that this comment will help you, um, put the Lyle boat ramp into the 2024, um, improvements calendar. And then the other thing was, and I don't know if this applies for this, but why doesn't the county have the historical value of, uh, Clicktack County as part of their improvement plan or, you know, it, it saving, saving the history of those that are alive now will be gone tomorrow. And I have seen only a $5,000 historical heritage grant go towards the history. You know, I would hope that the, the county could get on board with something, uh, to support the local museums. There's only a few, only handful, and they're all very old and all self-supported. And I've never seen anything to help them, you know, the Lyle museum is in dire strait of having, they have a water problem in the wall. And we don't know where we're going to get the money, but to stay open, we're going to have to take care of it. So we don't have mold. And I would hope that you would consider, you know, your local museums to be part of an improvement plan in the future. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll just continue to stay open for public comments. Does anybody else have public comment for or against the approval of the capital improvement plan for 2024? I'm not seeing any. Uh, so with that, I will go, uh, is any member of the board, uh, request clarification of public statements or staff comments?
I have none, no.
Um, I believe I already know, but can the person that did make comment, please state your name again for the record for our notes?
This is Tracy McKee.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Um, with that, I will take a chairman prerogative to advise Tracy that she can always call our staff. We do have a uh, historical fund and we do pay money to museums for historical stuff. Uh, and if she needs more information on that, she can reach out offline to do so. Um, the Lyle boat ramp is part of the capital improvement, but I don't see anything of a sidewalk in Clicktack, which is also a separate issue for the Public Works Department and they received a grant. And they came before this, uh, board and asked on whether we wanted to apply for said grant or not, which again is a separate issue and not on a capital. Um, so she would need to come forward with that question outside of this public hearing as well. Um, with that, I also do not have any clarification staff. So I will inquire if there's any further public comment by anyone who has not had a chance to do so, either for or against, uh, the presented capital improvement plan for 2024. I'm seeing none. Uh, with that, I will close the public hearing to further public testimony. Um, and open it for discussion from the board on how they would like to proceed.
If I, if I may.
Sure.
Um, in the three years that I've been in this role, this is my third budget cycle, my third, um, public hearing for the budget and the capital improvement plan, it would be my recommendation to just go ahead and close the public hearings on this day. Um, we do have the ability to leave it open for five days for written comment, but I have never seen a written comment come in after this day. So, um, it's my recommendation to just go ahead and close it today and we can move on.
Hey. Do we, uh, I would entertain a motion if anybody had one or discussion if anybody has that.
I would just mention that for those that are online that have not read the capital improvement plan for this year, our expected expenditure is $975,000. Of that $585,000 is a grant through our, uh, archaeology. Uh, and that's for the remodel of the Superior, uh, courtroom. Um, and with that, having heard no other testimony as well as the advice from staff, uh, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to, uh, close public comment. Um, and I would also include in that, uh, to approve the 2024, 2029 capital improvement plan.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Um, and I'll open it for discussion, but I think Commissioner Henderson might have hit the Um, and I'll open it for discussion, but I think Commissioner Anderson might have hit the nail on the head with explaining what our expenses are on this for those that didn't look into it. Uh, six hundred thousand for next year for courthouse remodel, of which five eighty-five is grant. Uh, fifty-five thousand to replace the HVAC unit in the, over the treasurer's. Seventy thousand to replace the HVAC unit over the prosecuting attorney. A hundred and eighty thousand to replace HVAC units, one, two, three, and four in the West End building. Uh, fifty thousand dollars to repair and cover the beer garden bleachers at the fairgrounds. Uh, and twenty thousand dollars for land purchase and drainage improvements at the fairgrounds for a total of nine seventy-five, of which, like we said, about six hundred was grant. Uh, without any other discussion on the motion?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor of our approval of the twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-nine capital improvement plan as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you. And for Tracy, I agree with you about the Lyle boat ramp and it's um. I, I would like to see that moved up the list as we go forward, so. Separate inside issue. Um, moving on, the next item for consideration is a public hearing to consider the adoption of the twenty twenty-four Clickcat County budget. Uh, with that, I will declare the public hearing open and advertise purpose of this hearing is to accept testimony both in favor and opposed to the proposed twenty twenty-four budget. Uh, fiscal manager Jen Neal will present, provide a brief overview.
Uh, as I stated earlier, the total, um, of the twenty twenty-four budget is, uh, sixty-five million, twenty thousand, three hundred seventy-two dollars, of which total, um, fourteen point four million, um, is tied to this capital improvement plan, road plan, um, is twelve million. Rounding.
Rounding. Yeah, I was gonna say.
Clarify that a little bit. I, yeah.
Always be careful with rounding. You'll be quoted.
Yes, and that twenty twenty-four budget was built with actual, um, PEB increases, DRS increases, and a COLA.
I did read an email today that there'll be, uh, L and I increases too, so we have to see that coming.
Uh, yeah, those are some.
Have you planned those in or is that just minimal?
It's so.
Okay. Um, thank you for the overview. Uh, with that, I will open the public hearing for the purpose of receiving public testimony, both in favor and opposed to the proposed twenty twenty-three or just sorry, twenty twenty-four budget. Does the board have any clarifying questions of staff before I go on?
No.
Do not.
Okay, uh, so with that, we will open the, the hearing to public comment either for or against the proposed twenty twenty-four budget. If you have public comment, we'll start in the room. Please raise your hand. I'm seeing none, so we will go online. Does anybody online have public comment for the twenty twenty-four budget? If so, raise your hand or unmute yourself.
Two, six, six, two.
Two, six, six, two. Please state your name and your comment, please.
Hello, this is Tracy McKeon again, and I'm surprised I'm up so fast. I wasn't quite prepared, but I'll do my best here. So, um, I am concerned about the budget, um, allocating so many, so much money to the, um, to helping us, you know, if there's a disaster or a, a ma- major catastrophe, um. It, it kind of follows the, the, uh, Brian Snore's seminar that he did on fire regimes and, uh, fire protection districts. And I go back to the two thousand and six, um, draft of the, um, the C E M P, which, which was between Clickidat County and Skamania County. And the reason why I bring this up is it, it'll bring you forward to what's, what the, what the wildfire protection plan or hazard mitigation plan is now. Um, Mr. Anderson, I think is familiar with this plan since he attended several of the meetings. But the C, C W, C E M P from two thousand and six, um, talks about the mapping and the way that the numbers are put into the, the first plan. And it was from, it was called RAM, R A M, that D and R came up with to give a risk factor on the different, you know, problems of the county like fire and volcanoes and earthquakes and things like that. And the RAM says right on it that it shouldn't be used for any kind of, any kind of planning or any kind of estimating. It's a pure, um, very, uh, simplified version of a map. And our two thousand and ten, uh, population, uh, came from the, those figures from the RAM maps, which also had several duplicating areas that it, it involved. And I, I'd be happy to bring this book up to the, the board and, and let you look at these, um, yourself. Anyway, so then we've moved forward to the two thousand and eighteen C W or wildfire, um, wildfire protection plan. And it, it then, it then includes all the risk factors, the dam safety, the this and that. But it states that the risk factor will start at a, at a number five out of ten, which why are we starting at number five? And the reason was is because we have so many people that recreate here that we need to count them in to the risk factor because, uh, you know, the fire, the search and rescue will have to go and find the people on the trails and such as that. And so there again, the population, um, for the twenty twenty, um, census is not accurate. It's including people that are recreating the trails and such. Then we go to the twenty twenty hazard mitigation plan, and this talks about, um, the flood, the flood plain.
I am gonna interrupt you because your time is up, but I will. Uh, I do have a clarifying question and that's that through your comment, I didn't get an answer on whether you were in favor of or opposed to the budget, and if you were opposed, exactly what part you're opposed to. So I will let you have a second or two to explain that to us.
Okay, thank you. I'm opposed, and I'm opposed to the emergency management fund that gives the emergency management, um, money to, um, prevent or to prepare for disasters.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, ma'am, for that clarification. That helped greatly.
Um, may I say just one thing?
Um, sure.
I, I was.
Quickly.
Okay, I was denied my three minutes during public comments, and that's why I overextended myself now. So, just to note.
Yep, no, no problem. I just wanted to make sure we had your actual, um, complaint of the budget on the record, uh, for our minutes, and it was well understood. So I wanted to clarify that, and I'm glad you clarified it. Uh, with that, we are still in public comment either in the room or online. If you have public comment either for or against the proposed twenty twenty-four, uh, budget, now is the time. Please raise your hand or unmute yourself. I'm seeing none. Uh, with that, I'll ask for my seatmates if they have any clarifying questions of the public statement that was made or of the, uh, staff for clarifications.
No, sir. I thought you did good getting clarification.
Okay. Um, with that, I'll inquire one last time if there's any further public input either for or against, uh, the proposed twenty twenty-four budget. Please raise your hand or unmute yourself. Last call for public comments on the twenty twenty-four proposed budget. Being none and hearing none, with that, I will thank Tracy for her, uh, input. I always appreciate it when the general public actually pays attention to government and looks at a very daunting four-inch book. Um, so I, I personally want to reach out and say thank you for doing your due diligence as a citizen. Uh, with that, I will close the public hearing to further public testimony. Um, and again, this hearing can stay open to comment, closed to comment. Um, I will look for staff for a recommendation.
I would recommend closing for comments again, uh, no different than the C I P. Um, in the three years that I've been doing this, I have not received, uh, public, written public comment from it being left open beyond this day.
Which is an absolute travesty, I might say. People need to be more attentive to their government. Um, but I agree with you. Um, with that, questions, comments, recommendation, motions, I'm open.
I think technically you just closed it to further public testimony, not just oral, so you already did that. Mr. Chairman, before us, we have, uh, the adoption, uh, of the twenty twenty-four Clickcat County budget. Um, my motion is to approve.
And I'll second.
Hey, we have a motion in a second to approve the twenty twenty-four budget as presented. Um, any further discussion?
Uh, yes, I would just like to say that, uh, most of the money in emergency management is through grants, uh, that come from the state. And we do not put, uh, very much, uh, county funds into that. Um, and that, um, I think that what the emergency management is doing in terms of preparing for future disasters is necessary. Um, it, it was brought up the C W P P plan and the C E M P plan. Um, we have put those plans to use this year, um, with our large wildfires, and it is great to have those plans in place. And so I support, uh, the work of our emergency management department and our staff.
As well I do, and I just want to say thank you, Jen, for everything. You made the process easy for me my first time.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I think you get a gold star, I think, because we're probably the very first county in the state to adopt our twenty twenty-four budget.
Well, I, yes, we have, we've gotten to this point, um, and the assessor's office actually got me the levy certifications way earlier than they have in the past, so, um, as soon as the road hearings are done, then you guys will have the official resolutions of adoption. So, it will definitely be done in October.
When I was up in Wasack, and I had mentioned to him that we had already worked our way through the budget, and I, yeah, they were all stymied. Um, could not believe the quickness and efficiency of going through and, um, hammering it out. So kudos to you, but I would also like to say kudos to, uh, the, our department directors and our fellow electeds for working with us in troubled times to get us a budget that we can pass that's balanced, um, and that serves the people. So I want to thank everybody that was involved. Um, without any further discussion on the matter? Okay, we have a motion in a second to, uh, approve the twenty twenty-four budget as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the comments that, uh, that you've all three made. Um. I was gonna come up and, and do the same thing. We often focus on the things that aren't working or don't work. And I think the budget takes an entire village to put together, takes everybody's effort. Um, and on behalf of Jen, and I would like to thank the auditor and the treasurer for their participation all the way through and the time they put into it. Um, what gets funded gets done, and this is a critical piece of our ability to, to work on behalf of the citizens, and I would like to echo how much I appreciate the work that Jen has done, and I, I think it has to, it, it's been a long time, if ever, that the county has had depth and the quality of information, um, and the participation that, uh, Jen has got and, and has provided to the commissioners and the citizens. So, thank you for acknowledging that, and a lot of people work very hard on this.
I, I would agree with you, and I would say that that's where I, I echoed, I wish the public would pay more attention. Because I think Jen has done a wonderful job at making our budget more transparent to the public than it's ever been before.
Agreed.
Uh, both in paperback form, sitting on the desk right outside that door, but also on the internet with, uh, spreadsheets and graphs and, and everything you ever wanted to know. Uh, even broken down into a little thirty-page summary, and, and unfortunately, I, I feel there's maybe four citizens that even look at it. Uh, and maybe they're just trusting us to, uh, take care of it, but, um, as much time and effort as she spent, uh, working on it for the general public, I wish the general public would pay more attention to it. So that, that's where my comment was going. Uh, but thank you all for doing that. Thank you all for coming. We are running a little behind schedule. Um, do my seatmates want to pass up on cons- now, let's just whip out consent and bills, and then we'll just keep on the list. Those will be quick, and then we'll move down to Mr. Arnold's testimony. So it's, uh.
Mr. Chairman, we have before us the consent agenda with three items. My motion is to approve.
And I'll second.
Okay, motion to approve the consent with three items. Any discussion on it? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of consent agenda with three items, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, we have a motion to approve accounts payable warrants in the amount of three hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty cents, ending October second, twenty twenty-three.
I will second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion second to pay the bills. All those in favor of paying the bills, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Um, I'm gonna, chairman's prerogative to move new business discussion on the agenda back, so, because we already have Ms. Arnold scheduled for two o'clock, and we kept her waiting for fifteen minutes. So as long as, uh, she is online, um, we will take her. There she is. Uh, ma'am, you, you requested time, uh, with the board to discuss the Fish and Wildlife listing of the Silver Gray squirrel and the meeting that this board had with, uh, the timber companies last week, and we are honoring you. Are you, uh, coming before us to speak as an individual or as a group?
Um, I'm coming to speak on behalf of Friends of the White Salmon River, and I don't mind waiting if you want to proceed with your agenda. I can sit here a little while longer. I don't mind.
We're, we're good. It's, it's, it's just a discussion we're gonna have, so I hate to have people waiting while we have discussions, because sometimes our discussions last a long time, so, uh, I would hate to keep you waiting, so, uh, let's go ahead and move forward with you, and then we'll move back to our agenda afterward, um, through with that, if you don't mind.
Sure. Um, I'm gonna try to read what I wrote, and, uh, I hope you'll bear with me. Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. Uh, a- as you know, I haven't had much time to prepare, so just be a little tolerant here. Western gray squirrel is kind of a Clickidat County iconic issue, uh, as we've all known for many years. But I want you to keep in mind that there are actually three populations, isolated populations in the state, one in the Northern Cascades, one at, uh, Joint Base Lewis McCord, and, and then ours, so it's a statewide issue as well. A lot of reasonable issues were raised in your discussion last week. I want to touch on a few of them. I'm gonna start with a couple of technical issues, um, partly because the presentation last week tended to throw doubt on the science, or at least some of the science presented in the periodic status review. Um, and I want you to understand that the periodic status review was quite thorough, and it's based on, uh, decades of research. Uh, I haven't been able to obtain a copy of the scientific paper submitted in testimony. I'd like to do that. I'd like to look at it. But the P S R, I believe the science is sound. Um. So some of the issues that were raised last week, populations are cyclical, so basically implying that because they're cyclical, cyclical, they don't need protection. The P S R recognizes the populations fluctuate in response to changes in food supply, weather, disease predation, and logging of mast-bearing trees, mast being the fruits of, uh, forest trees and shrubs like acorns. Um, but there are very many squirrels to begin with, and, uh, cyclical populations can be more dangerous for the, uh, western gray squirrel. They're not like coyotes, which, as we all know, can rebound from pretty much anything. W G S don't have that ability. They have some, uh, short, uh, they don't have the ability to reproduce more to respond to, uh, population, um, decline. Uh, what had, the second issue was raised is about habitat, uh, and whether the P S R has, uh, the correct interpretation of habitat, and I'm just gonna urge you to have a look at the P S R yourself and to watch the presentation, um, that was made with a draft P S R to the commission, which, uh, you can look at the slideshow, but you really have to listen to get all, all the details. Um, it, it's very clear what habitat is needed for squirrels, and the P S R does not oversimplify it. In fact, if you do read it, it will make your eyes glaze over as it describes trees, species, size, alternatives, all the different places and ways that can work for W G S. It is not an oversimplified view, and it's well-grounded. Um. So, those are just a couple of technical issues. I know that you said last week that you don't really want to delve into the technical issues, and I'm sympathetic to that because they are complicated, but I wanted to make those couple of comments because. wanted to make those couple of comments because I think some of the things you heard last week threw doubt on the scientific basis of the PSR and I think that's unwarranted. So the policy up, issues that I heard mentioned last week, somebody mentioned there's a ru- rush to uplisting. This is not a rush to uplisting. Western gray squirrel had their first PSR in nineteen ninety-three. Resulting in their being listed as threatening. Since then, there's been a management recommendation document, a recovery plan and agreement with DNR to file annual reports, which are all available online. There was another PSR in two thousand sixteen. None of this has resulted in anything like protection or in population, increased population recovery for western gray squirrel. We're still seeing slow decline and it's been a long time, so this is not a rush. Another issue that was raised was voluntary protection in timber harvest. Uh, and that protection amounts to, and this is also well-described in the PSR, it amounts to identifying nest trees and uh, establishing a small fifty-foot buffer around them. It doesn't specify which kind of nests. There are many kinds of nests, as was pointed out last week, and that's completely true. Western gray squirrels have a pretty complicated system of nests. They use all different sorts. The FPAs do not, if you read them, which I've read quite a few of them, in their agreements about nest protection, they don't describe what kind of, and they don't, they're only the arboreal nests, they're not the cavity nests that the WGS use for uh, reproduction and, and so on, so. Um, but the main problem, and this is, the, the voluntary programs are also discussed in the PSR. But the, the major problem with them is there's no oversight and there's no follow-up. They list in some cases, and it's, as we all know, it's mostly the, the big timber companies. And about fifty percent or sixty percent of the western gray squirrel habitat that's found is on smaller parcels, so it's not necessarily it's not likely that there's gonna be voluntary uh, agreements there. Um, but there's no follow-up. There's no reporting afterward. Nobody goes to look. Nobody checks to see what was actually done. And um, and it's just an insufficient, it's good. I mean, it's good that people are making a voluntary effort, but it's not sufficient. Um, another question that was raised was the percent, what percent of Clickitat County is habitat? The PSR includes some detailed figures about locations and squirrels. If you look, uh, uh, and if I could share a screen, I'd show these to you, but I know that's not possible. Um, but the PSR has some pretty good detailed figures on uh, nests or on pop squirrels reported in Clickitat County from nineteen ninety to nine to two thousand twenty-two. And also the overlap of those with logging permits and, you know, it's a pretty fair chunk of the county, um, through District One and District Two. I don't, I can't give you a percentage, but it is a pretty fair chunk of the county. Another issue that was raised was that this isn't, that this is gonna affect or could potentially affect both timber and land use, and that's completely true. Uh, uplisting wood then put the squirrel on SEPA uh, things. And I mean, I don't take this lightly, you know, uh. Timber is in, uh, is important to us economically. Um, I think the effect is greater there than on the land use, but it will definitely affect both, but the thing about it is, is that since nineteen ninety-three, the squirrels have not shown any recovery. In fact, it's just been downhill for them. And if they are uplisted, then there may be, there's not guaranteed to be. But there may be a process of, of developing of regulations to protect them and that process is open to everybody. That process can, people can participate in it and, and work on that together and try to come to some consensus. So, you know, um, over the years, I've become less fond of regulation. But the process of writing a regulation in this case is really an opportunity for people to try to work through the impacts and work through the advantages uh, or the need and, and come to some kind of an agreement, so I don't think that's all bad. But the real question is, what are the priorities here? And, you know, I'd ask you to not jump right away to the short-term answer that natural resources for short-term financial gain is the high, highest priority. We have to take a longer view. We have to ask what we need to do to protect natural resources. For many reasons. I'm going to read a short quote from a United States Fish and Wildlife brochure, which says this better than I can. And keep in mind while I read this that the western gray squirrel are a keystone species, meaning that they provide unique benefits for the ecosystem they live in, especially oak. They do things for the oak forest that no other species does and they're pretty essential to the survival. We don't know what would happen if they disappeared. We don't know what would happen to that ecosystem. So the US Fish and Wildlife says, between ten and fifty million species may inhabit our planet. None of these creatures exist in a vacuum. All living things are part of a complex, often delicately balanced network called the biosphere. The Earth's biosphere in turn is composed of countless ecosystems, which include plants and animals and their physical environments. No one knows how the extinction of organisms will affect the other members of its ecosystem. But the removal of a single species can set off a chain reaction affecting many others. This is especially true for keystone species whose loss can transform or undermine the ecological processes or fundamentally change the species composition of a wildlife community. And I think that's the point of view we have to take, you know, extinction of western gray squirrel is really a possibility with unknown consequences, so. You know, by all means, write a letter on this issue. That's your job to represent Clickitat County here. It's important to Clickitat County. But I urge you to take a more considered approach. Raise concerns, but at least acknowledge that there's a reason to be concerned about the squirrels. And that you'll put your weight behind reasonable solutions to help those populations recover and rebound. Thank you.
Thank you, paternal, for that uh testimony. Do my seatmates have any questions or? Oh, sorry, I had it all. Um, thank you, Ms. Arnold. Uh, do my seatmates have any questions? Uh, from Ms. Arnold on the issue?
I do.
Go ahead.
Pat, thank you for um, speaking to us on such short notice and speaking so concisely and thoughtfully. I always appreciate all of your comments um, and your kind consideration of uh, Clickitat County. Uh, you made the comment that the, that the, the squirrels are in a slow decline. I spent a fair amount of the weekend reading um, the PSR as well as the, the management plan and everything I could get my hands on. And the one big issue I came across is, is that we actually have no idea what the squirrel numbers are currently. And we haven't done any counts in any time. The, as far as I can understand, the basis is based on a decline in the amount of habitat that is currently classified as habitat. While we also still agree that there's krill squirrels in areas where they say that the habitat is, it's not considered habitat. How should we respond to the fact or uh, potential uplisting when we don't even have any accurate numbers on the number of squirrels on whether or not they are in decline or not?
Well, I mean, that is the, 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 the debate that's happening around this, um, and there were, there were squirrel habitat studies, I think in two thousand and seven, and at that time they um but they thought that the range of projected numbers was somewhere between eight hundred and fourteen hundred, something like that squirrels in the state of Washington. It's impractical to do the squirrel count studies for many reasons, which are explained in the PSR. Um, so they default to looking at habitat and there's information in the PSR about uh, if you count nests, which they are getting some nest information, they're not getting squirrel information, but they are getting some nest information. There's some information there about what they know about how many squirrels use a given nest, how many nests a given squirrel uses. And so they can make some extrapolations from that. Uh, but what impressed me most was the presentation to the commission, because I was wondering, you know, about this habitat thing. They really went into huge detail on the effects on habitat. They went from a four thousand foot level down to a much more granular level where they're basically kind of counting trees using various devices and aerial surveys and stuff that they have. So they're pretty precise on the loss of habitat, both in Okanagan with the fires and uh, and down here. Um, and I think that we just, you know, squirrels may try to exist in sub-marginal habitat because they want to stay alive, so they'll do what they can. But if our concern is to keep them on the ground, to keep them part of the ecosystems, then I think we have to be willing to, to say it's important for them to have uh, good habitat and um no, we don't have population numbers, but yes, we do know that their numbers, I mean, the estimates back in the eighteen hundreds were eighteen million western gray squirrel, you know, between Washington, Oregon and California. And now we're down, at least in, in Washington, we're down to maybe a thousand, so we know the populations have declined, there's no question. And, and the question is, how do we help them survive? How do we keep, prevent extinction?
Thank you for that. And uh, I, I thought I read that they were estimating there are fifty million squirrels in California currently, uh, but again, it was late when I was reading it. So we also know we're at the northern extent of the squirrel's uh, boundary, climate change and all that. I mean, in Oregon, there's a hunting season on the squirrels. It, it'd be, I'm not worried about their extinction, uh, but maybe their displacement from areas or certain areas due to the fires. You know, we have large fires that run through western Clickitat County once every hundred years that we're a little overdue for. I guess one of my other questions for you, and I didn't get a chance to write it down, so I'm trying to read what I wrote on you. One of the big takeaways that I read is, is that um that it was voluntary compliance, um, and that that was done during the FPA process. And that we'd found that there were ten instances in which the voluntary process was not followed. I believe all of those pro, all of those ten were on small, small landlot, landowners, not on the large lot landowners. That for the most part are the ones who do the large, uh, you know, regeneration harvests and all that. Uh, do you have thoughts for our comments on ways, because um, you know, you, you made the, the comment that regulation is not the answer, or, or you are less fond of regulation over the years, is how you stated it. Um, we've also known that it's too expensive, according to the PSA, to do squirrel surveys and squirrels, you know, to find out how many there are. Thus, we could assume that it's going to be very expensive if we go back and we look at every timber harvest to make sure everything was followed perfectly in terms of the cost. What would your, your advice for something that we can put forward to uh, the state in terms of what to do about those small lot landowners? Who are the ones who are not following the, what the biologists are recommending for connectivity and buffers? What can we do there?
Well, um, I mean, I think the first thing I would say is that our priority is increasing squirrel numbers and um, ensuring that they continue to serve their function in the ecosystem. Uh, and it is a problem in timber harvest, there's no doubt. I mean, the, the needed habitat requires aerial connectivity, so that is more than, y- y- you know, if you're harvesting twenty acres or forty acres, it is a problem, so um I think that over the years in the recovery plan and one thing and another, there've been many suggestions about things that can be done. And I am not remembering the recovery plan well enough. I read it a couple of months ago, but I'm not remembering the management recommendations to, 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 to remember exactly what they are suggesting. But, you know, voluntary compliance is good, but even Mr. Spidero said last week that sometimes it's more protective and sometimes it's less protective. And if we could somehow collect data somehow, you know, if WDFW staff were as part of their, they make a pre-harvest visit. If they could go back and make a post-harvest visit a year or two years later, I mean, it's tricky because you get an FPA and you may not cut for three years, you know, so there's there, there are difficulties in terms of any kind of monitoring of post-harvest activity. Um, but that would be a really simple thing that could be done is that uh, the DFW staff could, could go out uh, and, and just uh, look. They're trained to, to know about nests. They're trained to know about what they would be looking for to see signs of squirrel activity. Um, and I, I mean, it's hard to spot these things out, out in the fields, right? I mean, you don't just go out and stand there and look and see a bunch of squirrels. But you do look for signs that they're there and, and the FFW staff know what those are, so that would be a very first thing, but in terms of with the smaller harvests, I mean, recognizing that leaving the kind of habitat that needs to be left is a problem, then I think that we need to first agree that, that let's let's improve the lot of the squirrels and then talk about how to do that with a minimal impact uh, on, on, um, on, on the the logging, especially the small farmers, who, the small people who might only be doing one harvest in their entire lifetime. And it's gonna be an important economic thing for them to do it. So we have to respect that, but I think that we're never gonna have those conversations if the squirrel are not uplisted.
I guess one of, one of my concerns might be is, is that we we now have a significant portion of Clickitat County lands that are held by the conservation fund that we hope are going to be protected. We are also looking at large swaths of Clickitat County um, that are currently held by uh, Twin Creeks Timber that we're looking to have the development lights removed from. And we're also looking at Columbia Land Trust and others who are purchasing property for the conservation of the squirrel. This is in the and, and these are the high-value areas of the squirrel. I guess one of my fears is, is that even Columbia Land Trust is doing logging in which they're taking lands that could be considered today as habitat and they might be doing a heavy thin. And so that would punch it out of habitat, but they're planning for it for long-term habitat. And so my, one of my fears from uplisting and, and it comes down to those regulations is that many times when you uplist a species and you create those regulations, you eliminate the chance of creative thinking or sometimes long-term thinking in terms of you may be pushing a little bit of habitat off today so that you can have high-quality habitat in the future. That's one of my, I guess, personal, is, personal fears of what happens when we uplist a species. The other one is going to be in for our small, small timber landowners, uh, say five acres and less, who may or may not ever do any harvest. Would like to build a home on their property, you know, they've invested their life savings into this. And now you have a, a nest and, and we have the regulations that are not voluntary, but are, are now permanent compliance. And you could have, uh, in a two-acre lot, you could have the entire lot become non-useable. How, how can, how can we as the policymakers speak to that from the, from the conservation standpoint? You know?
Well, there are a couple of questions in there. In terms of the person who owns a five-acre or two-acre lot, I'm not aware that the building department, issuing a building permit, does any kind of SEPA evaluation. Am I wrong about that? You apply for a building permit. That's not part of what they think about. If you're doing a subdivision, yes, or, you know, certain kinds of land use, yes, somebody will ask you to fill out a SEPA checklist, but not for a simple building permit, right?
Uh, if, if you're in a known area with a, with an endangered species, say a spotted owl on that property, then yeah, you will need to do some sort of you know, research into that. And so I don't know with a state-listed species, if it would be the same as with a federal-listed species. That's, you know, that would be worked out in the future, but that is, as you said, those are the conversations you have. But these conversations that we'll have in the future are also the, the questions and concerns I have today.
And the other, the other um, thing that you raised was the, the presence of Lupin Forest, which is basically a for-profit corporation owned by the conservation fund. You know, they are following, I've been out on field tours, one anyway with them, and they're they are following uh, more protective practices. But I'm not sure that they're even still really uh, doing what needs to be done. Better, yes. Great, maybe not. Great, maybe not. And that just, to me, that just demonstrates that uh, this is a difficult issue because they are motivated along with a Columbia Land Trust and so on. They're motivated to do what they can. But even then, I mean, I remember on that field trip, somebody mentioned, maybe their forester mentioned the difference in net profit per acre in the way they thin and the way a commercial thinning would go, and it's significant. It was, I don't remember anymore, but it was more than a hundred dollars an acre, you know, it was, it was enough to affect people's pocketbooks. And so, yeah, I mean, this, this is not easy. But um, I I just at some point, we have, however slowly we move in that direction, we have to start coming to grip with the long term uh, effects on on the ecosystems around here. Or we're going to see changes that are just not, not good for us. And I will say, I've been told this, I haven't tried to verify it on Google or anything, but as far as I know, any state listed species endangered, the state listed don't have any regulatory programs. The federal ones do, but the state listed species generally do not. So it's not a given that this process of of writing regulations would even start, although certainly I would be in favor of it starting and and it's just because I have this, you know, hopelessly a rose colored glasses view that at some point we will actually learn to talk to each other and work through these problems together. And that's a structure where we can do that.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Uh, Mr. Zolder, do you have anything to add?
Thank you very much, Pat. I appreciate.
Thanks for having me. Yeah, thanks for having me.
Uh, yep, I want to echo that. Thank you. I think you bring another perspective and um, uh, gave me some things to ponder, let's put it that way. Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much, Pat. I appreciate our productive and cordial conversations as always. I wish all of our conversations could be that way with everybody.
With everybody, yeah. I don't know.
Next up is scheduling the date.
Yeah, might as well move forward to that. So staff update on this community county thing? You wanna I think you probably talked to us all individually, but we've not talked about it, so.
They were looking at uh, next Wednesday. Here, they would come here.
You have a mic right there? I had to turn that around on her. She's always getting us for not having her mics on, so I had to get on her for not having a mic on.
Like that county is looking, or uh, Skamania County is looking at coming next Wednesday. Uh, they're available between eleven and three thirty, if we would like to host them.
Um, next Wednesday, which is the eleventh. Uh, what do my seatmates think? And do we want to do it after lunch? Do we want to do it and make it a working lunch? How do you, what is your thoughts or feelings on that?
I'd be happy with a working lunch to work with them.
I think I heard, I wasn't here last time, but I think we owe them lunch from what I heard. I think Mr. Christopher, I heard you comment on what a wonderful lunch you have.
Yeah, but we stopped, where did we stop when we were in Skamania County and ate lunch? And I had a salmon fettuccine at some restaurant down there.
Big River Diner.
Big River Diner, maybe. I don't know. That's what he said. But no, they didn't, they didn't feed us. We fed before we got there, but we had an afternoon meeting with them last time and not a uh, the my worry is if we do our own lunch and start at one, we may not have the time we need to do it. So I would, I would agree that a working lunch is in order and we just figure something out and feed them and come in here and the public can sit through it if they want and.
All right, we'll put it on the agenda.
Yeah, and then if my seatmates have any um, ideas for the lunch option.
Okay.
Let her know.
And items, we want to have.
That that was the kicker. If you had items on the agenda to speak about, we needed to let her know so that she can post them on the agenda that we're going to be speaking about whatever those items are. So I hope that if either of you do have those items, you get them to her ASAP pronto. Um, so that she can put them on her agenda and that's.
Uh, we can do that. I know the finance, they'll want to be talking about our financial software update. They're looking at the same thing. So if we had kind of an update that we can give them on the direction we're looking, we're going and why, that would be really, that would help them out a lot.
Um, if they wanted to do that, I would say when we have whatever time you put, I'm sure they're giving you their items on the agenda and if financial software discussion is one of them. Whatever time that is, if you could invite a member um, that's more involved um, with the financial software, whether that's Heather Greg or Pam. And Pam's our only employee, so I would, I would probably lean towards that. Inviting Pam to give them a more detailed update on, so that way if they have more detailed questions on um, cash method or or how we're doing that, I they would be able to answer over me.
Okay.
Um, and then, yeah, so if you have items for that discussion, throw them to staff. Uh, any further discussion on that issue? All sorts of fun things. I don't know, uh, core engineers. So the letter, I think we all received, did we all receive the letter?
Yes.
Yes, Core Engineers letter.
The the one for the area around where we're building a new bridge.
One of the areas. Um, so the Army Corps of Engineers to all those that are interested in what I may be talking about. The Army Corps of Engineers emailed us and wants to do a cultural study on all the counties' property down along the Columbia River. Uh, but they can't do a cultural study of the property unless we give them permission. Um, my worry is if we let them do a cultural study and they find something we no longer can do, what we may want to do on the land down the road. I don't know of any positives for the county or the taxpayers that could come with this. And yes, if we did build a bridge, we would eventually have to do a cultural, but the culture would only be in the cultural area that we're using. Um, so I guess I'm bringing it to discussion on if any of you think it's a good idea to allow the Corps of Engineers to do cultural testing along all of our properties now.
Uh, I would say that, well, I always hate to to get the results of the test when somebody else is paying for the test, that's the test that we don't have to pay for in the future. And if we ever want to do something on those properties, if we can say that the Army Corps has already done it, at least that sets a baseline for what we can do in the future. Much like if we could talk somebody else into doing all the core samples down there at the uh, mill site, you know, uh, which hopefully we're getting a grant for here shortly, but that's, that's kind of my, you know, I I toss this around over overnight and I was like my, my first instinct is always don't get off property. But as I think about it longer and and more, I'm like, well, and some of it's not completely underwater. I'd say there, there's nothing to test anywhere, you know, they're just picking, they 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 ran their, through their consultant, their number generator. And you know, that's what it came up as. That's, that's the land that that used to be land back before the dam was built, but that's I don't think they're going to drain the dam to go do their cultural testing on a lot of that property.
Do they need to do this?
One of them, I think we have the point of the island. This little sand bar thing out here, I think we own a little point of it.
I think.
I don't know that they're testing, but I don't know that there's not a little island or anything out in the middle here, if they're going to actually go into the sand beds.
Do they need this as a requirement for a project? Is this a requirement for them?
That's not what it said, no. They're just doing a sampling of all the lands along the Columbia River. Um, I also worry about the other side because this is this side of the white salmon area where they were going to bridge, build the stairway to heaven essentially over here. You think that was over here, over here? I thought it was throughout these here, but maybe it is in this section.
That's where that gas pipeline station.
That'll get, have to get moved anyways. I guess the other thing is, is, you know, we've done, I I believe we've done extensive archaeological studies anyways. And if they want to add to it, go ahead. I don't see, um, if you would like to wait, uh, we could send a message, the the send a copy of this to the Bay State Bridge Authority, who hopes that one day you don't have that and ask them their opinion. Um, the consultant we have would probably have an opinion on it.
That's the only piece that right now I could be implying to say okay on. Um, because we're probably going to have to do that anyway, and the bridge is going to have to do that anyway. But at least this might help mitigate that. So I guess that is the only piece currently I would be willing to sign off on them. Uh, looking at, and that's only if the bridge wanted to, the bridge group, but even then I'm still at a uh, I don't know of anything really good that can arise by people digging holes. Uh, so, yeah, that's where I'm at anyway.
Right, since we have something current there, and like Jake said, we're going to have to have it if their consultant approves it. Um, I'm still curious as to why. Why would you initiate this for yourself if it's not a mandatory requirement through a permit or? I don't.
Throughout time, um, they do this, it looks like.
Yeah, I've never heard that before.
They're, they're doing a study on the traces, the history of the land, an effort to better understand how model locks in the dam and the reservoir associated facilities may be affecting these important traces of history. Um, Corps of Engineers and V P A are working with the Fed. To check the in impacts of cultural resources on government and privately owned lands. So anyway, um, so I don't hear consensus, so I won't be signing anything until I hear consensus of the board.
So would you like to send forward this to um, Michael Shannon and get their take and then we can talk about it next week?
That would be interesting.
You guys want to go about it. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't um, acting on my own behalf. Um, signing any documents without consensus of the board. If the board decides to have consensus, I will sign it up.
Shall we move to the rearrangement of the weekly meeting packet?
Sure. Um, so I don't know. Um, this came up and it's come up before to the passports. I'm going to bring it up again. That I feel that we can be a little more productive in our um, weekly meeting. Um, and the ideas that I will propose are number one, starting at nine o'clock instead of ten o'clock. Um, I will propose having the whole meeting, a working meeting and not a workshop. So have it a business meeting. So technically, starting at nine o'clock, we have call to order, pledge of allegiance. Approval of the business agenda, so technically that should help us in signing documents throughout the day and staff to, and staff to be checking signatures about the day. Uh, we step quickly into kind of the same thing here, first order of business. Um, is meeting minutes, citizen comments. Uh, because you have to have comment before you take action, so that would need to be at eight oh five or nine oh five, sorry, instead of one o'clock. We would need to, I would think, transition that because some people aren't going to know. So if we do accept that, at one o'clock, we mentioned that it's public comment time is at nine oh five, but if anybody didn't know that and wants to talk now, we let them. And then if it's, let's say Tracy, and we advise her from now on, it's nine o'clock. If she calls back next week at one and wants to comment again, no, we've already told you about that. Give everybody one chance to.
Are you, are you positive that that is the, I thought you had to accept public comment on like a hearing? And that you need to have a public comment on things that are not on the agenda sometime during the meeting. But it does not have to be.
You have to take public comment before you take action. So, and we are covered in that regard with the addition of we take written comment. We don't have to take verbal comment period. As long as we take written comment before the meeting, and that's the statement that I've added to the meeting agenda to make sure that we're totally covered. But if we are going to continue to take verbal comment, it makes sense to take the comment before we do the agenda in case their issue is something on the agenda. My point is, the other issue that I have is the what sometimes turns into a giant waste of time during citizen comment like today where we have fifteen or twenty minutes that nobody wants to speak. But then right at the end, everybody jumps up and we need to postpone everything else we're doing for the day. And other people have to wait fifteen minutes before their scheduled time, like Miss Arnold, who was scheduled for two, but didn't start until two fifteen because everybody waited till the last minute. And then we ran fifteen minutes long while we had at least fifteen minutes of dead air. The way other counties do it is they don't have a set time to close public comment. You have public comment until the public is done talking, which might be five minutes, it might be forty minutes. It it's the pros and cons of it, but when the public is done commenting, you have it going once, going twice, and it's done. It's over. You don't just sit there with dead air for twenty minutes. Uh, that is very unproductive to me. Um, I don't want to have it a set time that's five minutes or thirty minutes. If we have a busy day and there's six commenters that want to come on and we're running a little long, boom, that's fine. Let's, let's let them all in. Um, it might be longer than half an hour. It might be five minutes depending on the day, but at least we're not sitting there with dead air and nothing to do because we can't sign papers and there's nobody that wants to talk until the very end, and then they all want to talk because they all want the last word. Um, that's, that's just completely unproductive to me. Um, so I would recommend moving the public comment to the very beginning of the day. And then at least for the first few meetings until everybody is advised. Um, and say same deal, Dell shows up for his first time of commenting and he shows up at one o'clock because he's unaware of the schedule change. Fine, give him public comment, just advise him. It's now at nine o'clock in the morning and we will no longer be accepting your comment at one o'clock until we get everybody trained. Then it's nine o'clock in the morning. Uh, or nine oh five or or whatever, if the board so chose to do that. Um, I think it would also allow us more time to have our more department updates um, on our Tuesdays. Um, and give us a more complete schedule versus some of those times where we have like a half an hour in the morning and an hour and a half after lunch, and that's the extent of our moves this day. And then we're coming back on Thursday for three hours. It's like, this doesn't make sense. And then we had staff look at, I had staff look at other counties and how they do things. Um, and so they are available to answer any questions there. I don't know if you want to if you have anything to to say about that now or if you just want to answer questions if they have questions.
Whatever you guys want to do. Uh, we also have uh, minutes. Uh, the deputy clerk prepared minutes in two different forms. And we'd like to give you guys to take a look at that too, to see if we could change that, just because the formatting is challenging.
Um, I've thought this over over the week and I I think it's sensible. It's more in line with other counties, uh, gives us more working time, which I'm always looking for. Uh, seems to be in order a little more so we can get more work done.
Yeah, the other thing that I would say, the only two items that I would say I would recommend to be at a set time is public comment at nine oh five. Um, and then uh, public meetings, public hearings and bid openings at
one o'clock.
Whatever time. The problem is if we do it at one o'clock and I take a quick public comment for the next three weeks, that's going to push that back.
You can push it back a year.
So, but that would be my thing, think is public meetings exactly one o'clock as well. That was my thinking about that. At one o'clock and then everything else can fit in in the later part of the morning session or the and then that morning session having everything else, our business agenda, um, bills, consent agenda, all that kind of stuff. And then also, then you can. All that kinda stuff. And then also, then you can throw all public works in there. If there's anything of more time, great, fine. Uh, but making sure all that paperwork stuff is on the first part of the day. Uh, and then the only thing that's for sure on the second part of the day is the public meetings, public hearings and bit of.
Let's try it. All for innovation, including the minutes. And including, um, when we have major changes, we put. On the, you know, online, the agenda revised so that when we change it, then at least people know when they're going back looking for stuff.
Nope, that makes sense to me too.
Just, just for clarification on that, Commissioner Anderson, what, uh? With the, when you say, when you say the agenda, are you talking about the original agenda that we post?
Yeah, when you go on the county website under us and you hit, press the button that says agenda. And you know, it's, it's the one that comes out on Thursday, but that's fine. But then after we do a Tuesday meeting where we got seven different changes to it. Then you just have a revised one that we put up there that has, you know, what we actually did, so that when people wanna go back. Find the stuff in the videos to find out what we actually talked about, or the minutes, you can actually associate that.
I don't mind that, but I would recommend that we keep the formatting that's, that's on the agenda. But changes, add changes to that agenda. Redoing the whole thing in black and white, but, but just adding in the changes and highlighting the changes so people know what the changes were.
What, uh, Leanne and I were discussing was do it in red. As add-ons and specify these are add-ons and then put them in red. So that way it's. And then leaving the attachment as the same as the original.
Just so that we can go back and look at the minutes and say, okay, we have that conversation. And somebody can go back and look at a recording if they want. Um, because they remember that conversation and sometimes the conversation even the, so we don't know what day we had the conversation. Um, so yes, it makes sense. And then just, yeah, throwing red.
When are we going to implement this?
Um, I would imagine it would take a couple of weeks for you to get it on your productivity. Yeah, so I, I would say a couple of weeks and, um.
We can let people know a month, a week in advance.
Well, in advance and, and I'm fine with even scheduling it like three weeks out and every week at public comment. Will make the statement in advance that's starting on date X. Public comment will be at nine o'clock in the morning. Um, so yeah, maybe this afternoon or tomorrow, today or tomorrow, I will take the time to sit down with you. We will go over a. Um, draft.
Okay.
Um, agenda and then what do you guys think? Two weeks or three weeks? I don't matter.
October twenty fourth. Can work.
Work for me.
Okay.
Um, alright, so I see two presentations of minutes before me. One of them looks semi familiar. The other one does not. Um, I'm assuming one is the old style. What is the new style?
Yes, making the boxes is an absolute pain. Takes them forever.
Yes, it is.
That's their staff review right there. And so you're looking for permission from changing the old locked out format to the new format.
Yes, I was looking for suggestions first of all, and then, um, if you guys are okay with that, we can move forward. I'm willing to change whatever. I just think it's.
Um, I can't tell or not, but usually, um. For my audits with the S A O, they like the motion, like how you have it, but they always say have it in bold. Um, so that, that they can see it immediately.
Okay.
That's the one thing I've had a, not a recommendation from the state auditor's office, but that's probably each auditor's different.
Okay, I can do that.
But I'm totally fine with it.
Okay.
Yeah, it looks good.
Then you can have more duties as assigned. All your free time from blocking things out.
Yes. Um, I do have an answer for you, an official answer on your car washing of fleet vehicles. It sounds like through working with adult probation. Um, they will be available to, um, handle maintenance or cleaning of our fleet vehicles. Um, hopefully, I told them it, you know, once or twice a year, called on when needed kind of a thing. Um, they were hoping to do it on a Saturday. Um, of which then they can just come get all the keys from you sometime on Friday or something and, and then just whip it out on a Saturday. So, and then, um, I do not wanna be the middleman for that conversation. I'm happy enough to set it up and facilitate. And for those that you, that don't know, I sent about a sixty dollar Amazon list to staff of. Uh, car wash soap and vinyl cleaner and, and glass spray and rags and whatnot that we will need. Um, that they will probably just put in a little box in the little public works garage over there in the Sallyport and wash them over there. Um, so yeah, you just, uh, contact, um, the litter crew supervisor directly and, and go that route.
Sorry, I forgot to keep that on our agenda. Have we talked about it before?
No.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, because it was like.
Well, we had a complaint from someone that used one of our fleet vehicles that it was dirty and gross. And we've never had the conversation on. Spilt coffee. Uh, that we never had the conversation. We don't know if it was that way we got it. Uh, but we've never cleaned them. We've never cleaned the inside. We've never washed them. We've never whatever. And we've got staff running oil changes. But I didn't want necessarily to make staff have to go down and wash cars. Uh, whatnot, if we had another avenue, since the commissioners. Um, were so generous, not me, because I stayed out of that move, but my teammates were so generous. And providing that five hours of time to adult probation. I thought the, the commissioners might enjoy seeing what they're getting for their time. Or at least these ones. So anyway, yeah, that was the recommendation that I worked on. And of course, this board can say no all they want. Uh, I didn't figure that would happen unless, you know, you guys really wanna wash them or something.
I think, uh. As you're all looking at this planning information, are you ready to move into that?
Um, I, we can.
Your agenda. All business F S A. I mean, we can, we just gotta hand it in. Doesn't matter to me. I'm ticking them off as we go through.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine too. So we can either talk about F sec and talk about planning. We do need to have a discussion of where we're at with the district per cost or how we're moving forward with district per cost. So I have that on my little list. I don't know that we added it in, but obviously we're adding it in now. So go ahead, sir.
Well, actually, I think, um, Elisa got you this information. Um, you guys wanted to have a discussion about the transition. The next Tuesday will be Mochi's last day, I believe. Uh, but I wanted to add something about the recruitment, because we've talked about that this morning as I've sitting back there looking. San Juan County, as you know, is one of the two counties that's most recently recruited for a planning director. We know San Juan County's. Unique and different. They're paid significantly higher than ours. Um, they offered twelve months of housing and a ten thousand dollar sign on bonus. They also just moved the entire county to thirty-two hour work week with forty hours of pay. For recruitment purposes.
What?
They call it the thirty, they call it. Yeah, they call it the thirty-two. Hundred percent, hundred, thirty-two hours, hundred percent pay, hundred percent. Expectations. They still have to get the same amount of work done, but they're gonna pay him to do it in four days, but they're gonna pay him five days. Folks, I'm not advocating for that. I'm just telling you.
I don't know, but I'm going to San Juan County. Let's go. If we got in four days, somebody was sitting around a lot.
But, but that's what we're up against. Recruitment wise, that's how creative some counties are gonna.
Well, it takes them one day just to ride the ferries back and forth, so. If the ferries are working. Cause the ferries are all about to break and so.
It was, we recruit for really tough positions against counties that are doing those kinda creative things. It just makes it more challenging.
Well, with the immediate hole we're going to have. Uh, in order to not hit a wall. And to keep that department supported, we need to have discussions about an interim. Director, whatever that looks like.
I think there's been, Commissioner, I, and I would agree, so. I'm just here because I've heard various discussions and I know the time, Mochi's time is, the clock's ticking, is there's really two issues, the, kind of the. Interim director, executive oversight. Um, actually, I'll restate what I said earlier. I don't think there's anybody qualified to be the interim director, director mostly because of the C P A. And the flood plain, I think is the other piece that it's the. And as, as well as, um, um. That's totally my blank yet. Yeah, the C P A piece is important. That's what's gonna grind this to all, I think. And then there's how do we, how do we? The commissioners provide oversight to staff and at what level do you do that? So. But I think the one that's gonna grind work to all is the whole C P A issue. And I think that's what, uh, Elisa's handed out, is some information from Mochi. About what it takes to be a C P A official, and I think.
Essentially, to me, there's two conversations. Question number one is the C P A and how we move forward with that. Question number two is management of that department or oversight of that department. And how we move forward with that. Now, which one of those two conversations we wanna have first? I don't really care. I just wanna make sure they're separate. Well said, um.
Management of staff, what are you thinking that means? Direction of work would come from an interim or someone managing work. Things, but just managing the office payroll, those types of oversight.
So we'll, let's, let's start, let's start with that one over the C P A and we'll table the C P A discussion for a minute. So we need to have somebody that's overseeing staff, signing paychecks, signing time cards. Uh, approving vacations, um, that kinda thing, day to day oversight, that direction. Um, we also need to have somebody that's the. Person in charge of inter-agency quarrels. Um, if you might say, to, um, which is one reason why I'm gonna recommend very highly that we don't. Pile another interim director position on Mr. H R. Uh, because he might need to be a part of that inter-agency quarrel issue. I don't honestly know if we need an interim director. To me, interim is. Hey, we think you're gonna be the director later, so let's make you interim. I.
While we're shopping.
We just need a manager or a facilitator or.
You're talking two separate things.
I think to help you on that discussion is if you look at these documents, I just scanned them quickly. You can't have an interim planning director because by resolution, the planning director is the C P A official. So if you have an interim planning director, the assumption would be they'd be the C P A official. I don't know if that's possible. So call it something else, have it be something else, have it be.
Well, but that, see, that's why I was trying to hopefully have these discussions separately, because the C P A issue, yes, by. Regulation that this board passed.
Yep.
It is the planning director, but this board can just as easily amend the ordinance. And add a line to it that says in absence of a planning director. Next in line is someone's own.
And I asked Mochi about that, and she called and told me.
We would need to have a legal opinion and, but that doesn't really have anything to do with who we're gonna have sign paycheck, so. Uh, that's kinda why I wanted to have the conversation separately.
Yes, I agree. It's too big of a bucket for one person.
And, and to me. I.
Uh, can I say something?
Sure.
Lori Anderson's been there longer than time. Now, I can think back. All the times I've worked with Lori way, way back. And she's done so many of the duties in the office. She's very pleasant. She knows all the people's personalities. And I've also worked with her on the payroll and that reporting part of it where. Those were turned into her and she processed them for Kurt Drier back in the day.
Aren't you gonna have her oversee the planning commission?
Well, and that's where I'm at. So if she's, if she's picking up planning commission and all that stuff. Me personally, in that department, I would like to see managerial oversight. Being somebody that's not inside the department. Uh, that doesn't have, uh, if, if there becomes an inner office squabble, I don't want somebody that doesn't wanna take sides. Cause they gotta work with them both later. And I'm not your boss, so I really don't wanna take sides. I would rather have it outside eyeball looking at it. Um, and oversight. So I don't have a problem with Lori, whatever, signing time cards or, or, uh. You know, paychecks or whatever else, or planning commission. No, no issues there at all. This is no knock on Lori. Uh, but I believe.
Her inner agency.
They come to when they have questions. Who Lori comes to is not directly to us. There needs to be somebody. Um, and.
Your idea.
And, and I'm probably gonna have stones thrown at me in about five seconds. Um, but to me, you have two options. Um, option number one is your, uh, building director and option number two is be able to public works director.
I'm reluctant to add more duties to either those departments.
I don't have more duties to anybody. But I think we need.
As far as Lori handling the management of the office, I've had, um, a particular. Concern ever since I came, um, about chain of command and about how we operate. And if somebody knows. We're at here on the org chart, the respect factor from the other ones need to be there. To say, yes, that person is at the helm, they're driving this bus, this is what their duties are. And I, as an employee, need to respect that and follow what they ask me to do. That's a job anybody takes when they take any job. And we're lacking some of that in a lot of places in our county. And that's, that's, I pushed from day one for strategic planning and some things because. We seem to have a loss of that idea in several places in the county. Um, and I would like to begin that. If we aren't going through strategic planning, if we aren't going to. Wrap in some kinda mediation, at least at some point in time as a board of commissioners, we can start directing. And setting policy and having those directors below us and those people below them, that they understand what their positions are. They stay in their own lane, they do a good job, and they give respect to the other people who are running their positions. And I would like to define, starting with this department, define that.
If I, starting, starting in a department that doesn't have a director that we're trying to spread apart. Our pieces might be a little, it's gonna be, it's gonna be messy. I don't care what you, what you do, it's gonna be messy. I think we were, we have been given a very good example of, you know, who's, who does what. And so what you're really talking about is who's allocating the tasks and where. And when you look at that list and the time amount. I think they'll be able to work a lot of that out themselves based on their workloads. Cause I expect them all to be professionals, um, figuring that out. In terms of an. Inter, so within the department squabble, like that would be a good conversation for H R. That's the only place that that makes sense while not making H R the interim director. In terms of. Who can be the C P A responsible official inside the county, there's.
Again, that's a different.
I'm trying to hit it all at the same place. In terms of my thoughts inside the, the organization, the people who have the most. Most amount of diligence with C P A would be our county engineer and our public works director. In terms of signing for the C P A responsible official and looking at that. Um, otherwise, we could try again, um, to ask someone like Kurt Drier to come back on an interim basis. Said to do those C P As. Um, but I think he's gonna say what he's already told me once, and let's take a hike.
Yeah, don't wanna talk to you.
So.
And I agree, at least in public works, we have Jeff and so.
Even if it's an interim director, I don't believe according to our code. That gives them the right to be the C P A official, because it has to be director. So we have a problem with our own ordinance. We're gonna have to amend it to allow whoever we want it to be. Whether that's in the planning department. Whether that's in the planning department or a public works official, one or the other.
Or a vendor.
Uh, or a vendor to be that person and. We need to be sooner rather than later on that. And to me, that is legal opinion request. Um, on how do we amend our ordinance to have a. Um, protocol for, um, a second, third. Uh, in line of succession, uh, because, uh, to me, this is not the only time this is gonna happen. So we need to make sure that we. We change the ordinance to whoever that's going to be, but also add for a vendor to be that person in the same ordinance. Um, so that we have a. We don't have to deal with this again. Should've been done the first.
It should be as simple as a resolution where one person is authorized to act.
Max, I know, right?
Simple as a resolution.
I agree.
That allows someone to. That allows someone to act um, as the CIPA responsible official. And I mean, I don't see, but if you'd like.
I think it's a policy.
We had a, we had a, an interim county engineer who's acting as the county engineer, I mean.
But he was qualified and he, he had the education and experience to do it. I don't know, the CIPA official doesn't need any certification according to this document that Mochi got from ecology, but. I don't know what else the CIPA official has to have. I'm sure they have to know what they're doing.
Well, and, and I guess the reason why I'm asking for the. The legal backup is because if we think we're right and we get this wrong, then everything we sign a CIPA on. Between now and whenever we get an actual director, which could be six months, is challengeable in court. And do we really want to open that Pandora's box? Um, with, because we didn't want to get an opinion.
I'm, I'm the least knowledgeable on this subject, but I've heard a lot of conversations. It seems like there's very little we can do without a CIPA official.
It will, in talking to staff, a lot of the. Basic entry level CIPA boundary line adjustment type stuff is done. By planning department staff, and they just hand it off to Moshi for signature. So it's well for review and signature, but it is done by staff. So a lot of the. Lower line CIPA stuff can be done by staff if we change our laws. To allow them to do it. Um, and if that's the direction we want to go, that's fine, but again. I don't think you should just have it as one person being backup. You need to have. The option in there to have a consultant be your CIPA designated official. Um, because you don't know when you're going to need that option.
And we're kind of pigeonholing ourselves, thinking just about CIPA. She, she did a lot of other things. And if we have somebody that can interim plug that hole, whether it be an interim director, whether it be a consultant. Uh, however you want to call them.
Blood plane administrator.
Yep.
Luckily, we don't have a lot of that right now.
Sorry. But yeah, there's other, other things. And Mochi wanted me to, well, suggested I. Recommend that, you know, the, the PAs, you're really going to want to get the PAs input on the CIPA piece for sure.
I, it would be my recommendation to. For us to draft the legal questions. But for Moshi to come forward with a. Draft resolution or whatever. Uh, and work with the prosecutor on that to. Hopefully, we can make a determination and pick a name by next week.
Yeah, because we're in an unfortunate situation. This is an easy thing to even replace interim. In a two-week period, let alone have a couple of months to do it, uh, when a director leaves, we've, we've got till next Tuesday.
I mean, Mochi's got four working days.
Yeah.
So.
I think we need to make a decision of what we see as our direction and what our policy is to do it.
Right, but that's me with wanting to have that chain of succession in there. Not just one person can do it, there's other people can do it. If, if Moshi's gone and, you know, China or the next director's on a. Three-week tour in Italy, somebody needs to sign the dang CIPA. You know, we need somebody more than one person who's allowed by county ordinance. Uh, to do a CIPA, especially if there's zero training required.
Well, public works to me seems to be.
Logical.
Logical. Um, until, you know, at least next Tuesday, if we have to go the long route and ask a bunch of questions and try to move through this. At least if we could designate public works to pick up what we get. For a very short time period, but also look for possibly a consultant to fill that position.
Right, but public works can't do anything because. You have to change this, right?
Plus, I suspect Jeff will never go on vacation again.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We need to make the wording of the resolution that the, the public works director is.
Let's just do it right now.
Yeah.
Public, right, but see, there you go, he is on vacation. So that's why I want to make sure we have a chain of succession. And not just listing one person, it's the planning director. If the planning director is not available, is the public works director. If the public works director is not available, it is the.
One of the questions you might want to ask the PA is, can it be anybody you assign? Is there requirements outside of, you know, of what we have here? You have total latitude and who is in that succession, or does it have to be? Certain background, certain skill set, certain knowledge, certain education, I don't know.
What, where's, what is the, no, I want to know exactly what does the RCW require? Uh, and point each one of those requirements out specifically.
I'm sure there's ways to work around some of it, because if a planning director die, you have to have a way to fill that position.
Well, that's, that's my point, and there's also going to be an RCW somewhere that explains the position and the process. And who can be and who can't be. Got to be an RCW. Um, and that's.
Well, there's a.
That's what we need to look at.
There's, there's a WAC, chapter one ninety-seven dash eleven on that first page, she passed it, but I don't. I didn't see a specific RCW, but then again, I'm not. It's not my area of expertise.
Yeah, but right above it, it says, that's just definition. And right above its definition of RCW, so whatever the page before that was. Might actually explain what the actual RCW was, so, um, yeah, interesting.
Back to the first topic, I think, I think this is going to take longer than y'all think.
Yep.
Like, whatever you start with, whether it's Lori, whether it's Lynn, whether it's Jeff. I mean, Lynn's right next door, they work together constantly, those two departments. Some counties, those two departments are combined, actually probably many counties, most counties in Oregon, they're combined. Could, it may change. I mean, this, we don't know how long this is going to go on, it may be short term. It could be six months, could be a year. I mean, we have no idea at this point how long it's going to take us to fill this, so. I don't think whatever you decide today has to be what, what it's going to be six months from now. You may find. That it's not working, or you need to do something different, so.
And that's where I meant, I'm kind of torn on it because this board is. Uh, many times discussed, although it might come as a surprise to staff. Uh, a combined building and planning department with one director.
I shouldn't say most counties, many counties, especially the larger ones, if combined it. After many different names.
Um, part of me wants to entertain that thought. And then instead of, you know, necessarily hiring a. Uh, planning director who would be responsible for public records requests and dealing with those angry public. Uh, maybe we could take the heat off of that person a little bit and remove that responsibility from that person, and it might. Give us a little more longevity of whoever we hire in that position that is, we're setting up for failure. Uh, if we allow them to be abused by the public like we allowed the last one to be abused by the public. Um, we are going to have a hard time replacing Moshi because people talk. Uh, everyone is aware of the hostile nature of the public in this county. And so if somebody says, hey, I'm thinking of applying for that job, and what do you think? Um. It's, it's going to be hard. And if we. Are expecting to hire another public works or a planning director. Uh, that is responsible to have to deal with those same people that are being harassing. It ain't going to go well for us. So just kind of forethought, and I think separation of the. Person doing the senior level planning and director responsibilities. Would be good for us, but that's.
And I think this conversation is getting way off of. Main base where we need to be, we need to, we only have a few days, we need to support that office with crucial things that they need. And we need a super responsible official. That's our minimum, and then we can work from there. Every day we can work from there and start filling our gaps. But for today's conversation, to keep it short, we need to decide what we're going to do.
And I don't know if a mechanism exists for you to declare an emergency on a resolution. That might be part of it, PA question, whether you, short term can do something as you're working through updating the resolutions and. That kind of stuff or not, I don't know.
I guess the next question would be is if we start sending over written PA opinion request, it might be three weeks before we get a response, so.
They're busy, yeah.
They're busy, they're busy.
Yeah.
And I sent, I just sent a quick request to our representative at Department of Commerce. Uh, to see what their suggestion would be or advice would be of how they've seen that happen when we have a quick turnaround and we need a CIPA responsible official.
And isn't the CIPA in the ecology, isn't that part of it? No, but this says it's. But I mean, since here it's. The CIPA rule, okay, I got you.
That was a council on environmental policy. Mm-hmm. What's that?
I agree. I don't believe that is correct, RCW. Or designation of our CIPA officials. Is the way I'm reading that anyway.
The WAC is that, remember?
So the WAC is one nine seven dash one one dash seven eight eight.
Seven eight.
That talks about the responsible official.
I like that. Either way, again, this is going to come down to, I don't know that we're making a decision on who the CIPA official is going to be in the next week without a legal opinion. Uh, because I want the legal opinion, but I also want the legal opinion to point out the exact RCW or the exact WAC. And I guess maybe in that legal opinion, we could. Add, for example, could the so-and-so public works director, county engineer. Plans examiner A qualify for. And then if he wants to say no to any of the options that have been considered here today. He could add, then have to point out in the RCW, the WAC, how they're not qualified.
So Elisa, are you going to draft this PA request? Well, I mean, it should come from the commissioners.
It definitely should.
I just beat you to it because you were going to ask me the same.
Again, I will be in tomorrow if. Any other, um, people that this board is considering of being. Their nominee for CIPA official, I've heard Jeff Hunter, I've heard. Um, Seth Skarol and I've heard Lori Anderson, anybody else you want to add to that as an example, legal opinion?
Well, let's make it Jen.
You want me to Jen the CIPA official?
Something from a call. The responsible official represents the lead agency to ensure environmental analysis is met under CIPA. The official can be a single agency representative for all CIPA reviews. Different staff with varying specialties for each CIPA review. Or a group such as an environmental review committee, city council or county commission. We can review.
Oh, great, we're the CIPA official now.
Solve that one.
Just what I need, I have all sorts of time on my plate.
Well, how many of them do we have?
Uh, they're about eight hundred pages a piece, so I tell you, I'm not interested.
Go ahead. CIPA is a checklist. You're thinking of an EIS.
So we have a, a wide variety under ecology's view. Um, as long as we have an official that we designate.
Okay, so I guess we'll add that into the legal question. Now I've heard four. Different people, Seth, Jeff, Lori, and the board of commissioners.
I think Lori was part of the discussion on the, the.
Management of the office.
Well, I think she was part of the discussion on at least the basic entry level CIPAs too, was that right?
Would you have the associate planner be the CIPA official or the planner one or two? I mean, there's a structure to the department.
Right, but they, well, I guess it could still technically be the same way because they're doing most of the CIPA legwork and then handing it off to the CIPA official. For review, and if, say, we were the CIPA official or Jeff or whoever. Um, they would still be doing the legwork of it and then handing it off to whoever we so chose for review, so that's fine if you want.
Exactly.
Okay, if you want Lori off that list, it's now Jeff Hunter, Seth and the board of commissioner.
And I'm comfortable with that for interim.
And, uh, consult.
Until we find a consultant.
Well, and I had consultant needs to be on the opinion request too.
Okay.
I think there's a third thing that I've heard discussions, maybe you need to talk about today. If you're thinking of bringing a consultant into. Do parts of the planning process or supplement the planning department.
Or at least be. A phone call away for somebody in the planning department that has a question.
And I think you also need, we need to find out, is that a RFP process?
Correct.
Or is it, is it professional services? Can you just go out and contract with somebody? Um, I know we should always do an RFP if we can.
God, does this qualify as emergency since we don't have anybody and there's nobody oversighting and.
And that I don't know, so that's another question.
So that's the other, that's I said, I'm going to have to sit down with. Maybe, are you going to have free time tomorrow a little bit as well? Well, then maybe me, you and Alyssa can sit down and brainstorm some legal questions. As I knew that one five minutes ago, but I forgot it until you said it, so I'm going to. Appreciate you guys remembering these because that one was on my list.
PA's office is busy, the more we can put it in one request, it might be easier for them.
That's my point. I don't like to send one, I don't like to send a contract and then change it and then have to send it back again. Uh, kind of one size fits all. Okay, so those are the CIPA questions we're turning in. Now who's managing or overseeing? Department and is there a stipend and all those questions come next?
Can't speak for Mochi, I think she would. Would think maybe Lori would be able to, to do the. Sign the time cards, well, they don't sign it, you know, sign the time cards and, and you have to sign to get a PA request. You know, the things that the, the director would need to sign for. But staff knows their jobs, they know what they need to do, they have that list. Um, and if it'll, if it gets overwhelming, then you could. Go to a plan B or C to a Lynn or a Jeff. If you needed to, but then as far as a stipend, that's a new territory. The case and I work on that a little bit, I think, I mean, the interim director, we have a past, we have a long. History of how we do that, this is something different. And frankly, what I want to avoid is, one, I agree. Um, you want to acknowledge the extra work, um, but also you have. People in every office and every department who are taking on extra work, and how do we, how do we not reward? And how do we, how do we not reward one in this new area and um. Not be aware of, uh, there's a lot of people doing a lot of things above and beyond. How do we, how do we deal with that? So um. So like Casey and I just went around a little bit, I just think it has to be well defined so that it um. So when people hear it, they understand and they go, that makes sense. That makes sense.
So your recommendation is not to. Figure out a management structure right now.
I'm thinking maybe just, I, I think it was Mochi's thought, at least to me, that, that Lori could do it is, is kind of in a. I don't know what you would call it. As far as the, the, the management things that need to be done, signed for administrative, I think she fills, she's on, speaking for. The staff, the staff know their job.
I guess I can't, I have to speak that I do believe she can do the administrative. Oversight of the department, no problem, I have no issues with that, but I feel. That we are doing a disservice to the department by not having. The next step up. Her not having someone to go to.
Well, how about, how about if she comes to HR?
Then you're in directory again.
Well, Casey's, Casey's.
Naturally be directed to personnel department.
That if something comes up, she can't deal with at a staff level, that she would come down and talk to the HR department, which is what other offices and. Departments do now and we try and help them through that and.
I get it, we're, we're essentially at a crossroads, I disagree with that scenario.
I don't have a. I'm just trying to keep this conversation. Moving, so.
There hasn't been a consensus of the board yet, so I'd like to have a third opinion.
I also think Lynn can do it. She's right next door, they work together all the time, they're familiar with the staff.
To me, it's somebody outside of that department and I don't really care who.
Is Lynn raised her hand and she probably just hung up. I, and there's lots of other options.
Mr. Anderson, your opinion or thoughts?
I want to see what these, what these uh, employees can do and how well they can work together. I think we have a good set of. How that gets separated out in terms of the workload and they can work together. In terms of signing the checkbook or signing the time sheet. Um, we have a director sitting right next door that can sign that. But doesn't need the oversight over that, that group. Um, in terms of the responsible CIPA official, I think we can have a conversation with the PA. But um, my initial direction is, is it would be Seth or Jeff. In terms of signing that, you know, when it comes before us.
The C short term.
In the short term, yeah, just to sign it. Um, I would design it so that um. That, you know, the person who's working on that CIPA checklist, who goes through that. Would then do it like on, you know, when they get together and they would, they would review it together as a team to make sure everybody's on the same page. And then send it to Jeff for Jeff's review. And so that that team is working as a team and they're working in a cohesive manner. Any issues that's not cohesive would go in front of uh, you to, to mediate that because you are the mediator of the county, let's just be honest. Um, and then, and then in the meantime, we move forward on trying to find somebody as quickly as possible. Um, I don't see it being much work uh, for Director Ward. Um, other than just signing that and staying out of the, the personnel issues and all that stuff. I don't, I'd better not be much work for you on the personnel side because these are all professionals and I expect them to work together.
Can I ask clarification question on what, what exact parts do you want? Lori to pick up and what exact parts do you want Lynn to pick up just or crystal clear on what your recommendation is?
So Lynn would do the, those administrative duties on signing paycheck, you know, that thing. Budget authority, that, that thing alone. Um, in terms of um, when an application comes in and sending it to one person. I would let Lori have that, that direction because she's been at the, in the office the longest.
Department manager.
I'm just gonna say you just, one of, one of your pieces is to send, send it on the list, you know, that we have. Whatever dang thing went right here on who gets it, because some of these, either one of them can do it.
Lori's there traffic control for the work that comes in that's new. And Lynn would be our traffic control for signing documents.
Yep, and we will find the resp- the responsible CIPA official, who that may be. And it may end up being the board to review the CIPAs, that's not that big of a deal, it's just to review the CIPAs. I have faith that the staff is gonna do their due diligence on filling out the CIPAs. Most things that come in are a lot of things that come in, it's the applicant who actually fills out the CIPA. The staff is reviewing that and making changes and telling, putting, adding to it. Um, but in terms of making the actual determination on whether that's an MDNS, a DS or an EIS. That, that needs to be someone.
Well, since your recommendation sir sounded a lot like mine, just better worded, I would uh, I would agree with your. Um, recommendation. Um, Ms. Silver, do you have any uh?
No, I agree with Jake.
This gives, this just gives us a upfront plan. This is, this is change.
And then I will, I will make sure I come in and take time to work with you and Alyssa to. Think of all the PA questions we might need to have. And hopefully we have. Uh, legal opinion quickly that we can act. Um, sooner rather than later to amend the ordinance, to change the wording to whatever we need to change to, to get a. Acting CIPA official.
And I don't know if it's gonna be the board chair or the commissioners that talk to Director Ward to see if she's willing to.
I uh, have a meeting already scheduled with her about something, I don't know, I'm guessing it was her saying, please don't make me do this. But I didn't get time to do that this morning, so I will meet her this afternoon and I will listen to her. Whatever she had to tell me.
And then uh. Uh, Jeff and Seth. Of course, by ten he gets back, we may know.
Well, we don't, yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't.
Please remind her uh, about George.
Already on it. Um, yeah, I don't know that I'm too in a hurry to talk to Jeff until we're, we get an answer for the CIPA stuff. Because it kind of part of what I'm actually hearing is the boards thinking it may take on the CIPA duties. Of the official, so if that's the case, then no sense talking, so. I'm three feet away from it, it can't hear it?
No, it went, you can hear, I couldn't hear over here.
I'm sorry, um, oh yeah, I don't, I don't want to talk to Jeff yet about that possibility, let's see what legal does and. Um, this board might just decide it wants to be the designated CIPA official and then. If it doesn't and it wants Jeff, I'll go have that conversation too. So.
It's really hard. For me to say the whole board could do it. As the board's gonna have to rule on a CIPA determination. Maybe one member of the board could potentially do it so that.
I have zero interest in one member of the board doing it.
Really? Because I would love to have you learn a whole lot about CIPA and enjoy that for six months.
Nope, I think it, if, if we're gonna do it, it needs to be the board and it needs to be consensus. And if we're talking about a topic that gets a mitigation or a condition.
I don't think we have to talk about this, I think it's gonna be covered just fine.
So.
Departments are gonna do.
One more question, and I'm way out of my lane, but I've heard it being discussed, so um. Maybe Mochi's already addressed this with her staff. So there's gonna be a timeframe till we get this determined, week, two weeks, ten days. So some things can't get done without a CIPA official. Are they gonna notify the public when they bring things in that, because the first part is going through the checklist, I'm assuming. But you know, until we get it figured out, there may be stalled or delayed. And it seems to me the public should know that.
Staff needs to, I would say staff needs to advise the applicants when they're getting an application. But essentially, we currently don't have a CIPA official, we hope to remedy the situation shortly. Um, but um, let them aware and. Like I said, my hope is that we're not without one for more than a week or two tops, so it shouldn't stall too many people.
If, if it all goes south and goes wrong, we can always just say that's it, we can't accept applications because we're in a tight situation.
HR manager slash CIPA official.
That you get for being old and wise.
We got like four members of the public that I sure would love to be assigned.
There's candy in there.
She did win the candy award this.
I brought candy today.
What?
I knew better.
I gave you two Snickers last week.
Baby Ruth.
No, I bought a bag.
One bag too, I just uh, hit him from Candy Bore. Uh, moving on, got that done.
I just uh, mentioned the Western Pond Turtle, um, adding to our. Woes in natural resources with the potential uplifting of the Western Pond Turtle, this affects many different places in Click Attack County. And um, it takes my, my first theories, you know, that we can, we can survive with a natural resources coordinator. To deal with the, the squirrel and the pond turtle and these processes, um, to me, that's, that's. Higher management level and higher push than just the project coordinator position, that's, you know, that's. That's some specialty stuff.
So you think by hiring a HR manager slash director, you could stop the uplifting of a squirrel and a turtle?
No, I wasn't talking about an HR manager or anything, I'm just saying that, that if you're. It's, no, it's, it's the difference between somebody who's working for sixty five thousand dollars a year and somebody who's working for eighty five thousand dollars a year on their history qualifications.
Could that twenty thousand dollars stop the de-list or the uplifting of a turtle or squirrel?
We certainly would serve our public for a pushback.
I think what you're doing is, is you're not topping and uplifting, what you're doing is, is you're working through the process to set the stage. So that when the regulatory side begins, you're in the best position to protect the citizens of Click Attack County.
I agree.
Interesting, I'm dying to know how you guys are gonna get through the budget next year, but throw another twenty thousand in there.
Well, you do know if we go and hire somebody um, as, you know, say a. CIPA responsible official on a contract, you're uh, you just threw your budget out already, so.
I would argue that we have a hundred thousand dollars set aside for just that. In our budget next year. And then any wages that we're currently not.
Anyway, I would just wanted to add that to the thought process of.
We have to do something with the natural resource position.
Well, we'll, we'll see what we get for applicants um, here shortly. When does the review start? I know it's out, when do we, when, when's our review?
Two weeks.
Do we have any applications yet? Okay.
Oh, awesome.
New ones or?
Oh.
Okay, well, we will have a conversation later. Okay.
That's interesting, I would um. I would entertain.
Stay in your penalti box, I can't hear you.
If uh, my teammates who both have more experience on natural resources than me. Uh, wanna keep up on those applicants and when they think there's qualified applicants to. Bring it before the board, that's fine with me.
You betcha.
Okay, the other one I have before you um, that I brought forward, wherever it went in my big pile here. The DNR transfer lands, if you don't mind moving forward to that, Chair.
You know, for a short meeting that wasn't gonna cover anything, we've about covered.
Nah, we got more. Okay, so if you guys got that email and tried to parse through it, it didn't make a bit of sense, so I con- I contacted DNR about what, what exactly they're trying to do. And what I found out was is um, out in Trout Lake where the ski resort was gonna be, that was. County timber trust lands and um, when the ski resort didn't file through. They ended up having, because the leases were, people built two houses out there. And it's been a pain in DNR's butt for thirty, forty years now. And uh, with the change in the legislation last year, they're finally able to sell that underlying land. And so the idea is, is to. Because of the way the law works, in order to sell that land, they have to reimburse us or compensate us for that tip for that land loss, so. They have to move the land from timber trust into the land bank. And then they have to move other land into timber trust when they figure it out how it's all gonna work, and so the land bank acts as a centerpiece.
Does this mean we're actually gonna eventually get land that they can actually eventually harvest timber off?
Can I get there, are you gonna?
Oh, you were starting to confuse me there a minute.
Well, you're gonna probably be more confused. So they have to keep the market value the same on what it is. And so what they want to do is they want to sell those two underlying properties at market value, they've set the market value for a four acre parcel at sixty two thousand dollars. And another one at fifty nine thousand dollars. And so I think we're gonna have to have some comments on that because you look at any lot and it's going for nothing short of two hundred thousand dollars.
And these are tree lots.
Uh, there's not a whole, it's four point three acres, it's, it's not good timber, it's on the side of that hill. It's, it's buildable lots is what you're, they're actually actual.
And it's in a good location.
I mean, they're putting the value on there as trade value, not as it's buildable value. I don't want to really, you know, ruin the lives of these tenants that are sitting there, but again, this is county trustland properties and we have to protect that asset. There's another lot that's ten point three four acres that there isn't a house on. And so that one will have to go to public auction, they'll take the dollars at the public auction or, you know, all that they get. And then a portion of these parcels are gonna get then transferred into county trustland. They put forward two different parcels, one of them is right next to the Elk Meadows RV Park. Which is right next to this big area, which is also potentially Western Pond Turtle, Elk Habitat and Refuge.
How did, how was, how did the houses get built on land that they own, they just leased the land from the?
Just like, just like, just, no, it's from DNR. And that was the area that had the, the um. Uh, T-bar or whatever it is, the ski run out there.
So in nineteen eighty five, when I moved here, I went up there to lease that and run that building. We got up there and the Kelseys at that time owned it and they opened up all the pipes and stuff and they hadn't turned them and they broke. All in the ceiling and everywhere.
So uh, getting back to it, my thought, I'd love to hear more about that. Is this other parcel, which is a little bit further to the west, is a forty acre parcel that's flat. Fairly flat, easy to log um, with uh. A fair amount of timber on it and a road going through it. Um, and so.
West of.
Yeah, it's just west, um, the parcel numbers are on here, so you can look them up to see where they're at. And it's not very far off of the, the, the main road. My thought would be is, is that, you know, we could send them in a, a letter that says. We support this transfer, we support you getting rid of this problem and. Uh, we would, we would prefer it be all of that being on this parcel land, not the other parcel, it's still within the county. That, that is close to being merchantable timber ground. They have done a logging operation, a couple sections to.
Is it west on the Elk Meadows side of the road?
No, it's going out towards Ice Cave, or uh, towards the caves. So um, the further we keep our land away from. The nap, the nap, the better off we're gonna be. Because likely, I, I have a feeling they would love to give it to us and then never log it.
True.
And then we, and then they, because that land is in um. State schools, they then have to transfer that land into that reserve, switch it to us and then they gotta use. Land that they purchased on way out there in Clark County. And that's gonna be rolled into state schools from state transfer lands based on the values. And that's how they move the pieces on the Titanic.
So when it's in state schools and it moves out of your district, is the money allotted by district?
So state schools go to state schools.
It just goes to the state fund.
So the county, the county lands, the, the county schools will get a piece of.
Okay.
But it's all, both, both sections of that county property are within the same school district, so it doesn't really matter. So that's, that's kind of the overview because the way the pictures they put out on that email. Didn't show these lots, it didn't make any damn sense, so I tracked it down.
Thank you. That was a big help and I'm glad you did that.
But the question I always still have is, is so they've been paying a lease on this property, have we been seeing this lease, has it been coming to us or not? It goes, oh, I don't know. It should be, I was like, well, show me the money.
Yeah, I don't know if anybody's been in it or leased it.
Uh, well, the two house lots. They, they should be paying a land lease per year, I don't know what it's been, but.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, DNR should have been paying us, but.
Do you think they were actually paying a. A bona fide land lease or was it one of those one dollar a year for ninety nine?
I don't know, honestly, I have no idea, I didn't, didn't get into it that much, I want to see the solution of the history and. And while I want, you know, the land, people who've been leasing it for the last thirty or forty years to be able to purchase that property. Um, I've seen in Idaho um, where their DNR wants to sell all their land around their lakes. And they put it up for public auction and then they have to put the house and the land up for public auction. And then, because you can't sell the land underneath it, and so you end up having to buy, buy the land under you. But if somebody wants to pay more, they can buy your house. On top of it and it's a mess, and so that's why they're finally moving forward with this because now you can actually. And so that's why they're finally moving forward with this, because now you can actually sell it to the underlying landowner. I just think you need to. Sixty thousand dollars for a lot in Trout Lake kinda just makes me go, come on. Can't even.
Well, that's, I guess that's my question. How the hell did they get to that number?
Well, I think.
Using comparable sales or something.
Well, the, well, they're, they're, I think what they're doing is being DNR and they're using the li- the timber value on it rest versus the land value. Cause you always have a, a land cost when, when you run all the calculations for large timber lands. You've got your land value, but then you've got your timber value and your land values, you know, runs like five.
In these exchanges.
That's kinda my question. So if they, you know, if they put this out on a public market and we're trying to sell these for sixty thousand dollars. Uh, I'm pretty sure the owner would never get the property or the guy who had the house would never be able to buy it for sixty-two thousand. There would be many people standing in line, driving that price up much higher than.
What, just so they could be the landlord over this person? I mean, see, that's, 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 that's why there was a change. Um, but anyways, so I guess my thought would be is, is we send a letter. We don't want to see any use on this parcel. That one that's night next to the natural area preserve. We'd like to see that going on to more productive timberland that, that should be harvested sooner rather than later.
Yep.
And I would direct our natural resources program director to do, write that.
Write that letter.
Yeah. And what I'm saying is, is I will take it on to try to get that letter out.
Okay, thank you.
Get you guys a draft of, of that letter.
Thank you.
If that's what the board would consensus was like.
Sounds like. Next is, what do you got? Is something we forgot to put on anything?
It is. It came in my mailbox today. I was just gonna share it. If that's okay, it's just the, uh, McCad fiscal twenty twenty-three annual report. And McCad does a lot of good work and I thought maybe you'd like to have a copy of what they did last year.
Okay, are we discussing this?
No, just for your information.
I will put that on my plate. Um, what else am I having notes that we have?
We have old business FSEC.
FSEC.
All right, we talked about it last week about the clock ticking and, and appeal for that and. I don't think we've ever came to any kinda decision about doing.
You were gonna check on what the appeal. Uh, length was, and then you needed to ask legal questions of the prosecutor and that's where we left it.
And I've, uh, reached out and have not heard back from FSEC. And the prosecutor and I have had a hard time getting time together. We were hoping to have time this week. Didn't work last week. So that's where I'm at with that.
So is that the update then?
That's the update.
All right.
But, uh. You know, the sixteenth is coming.
Well, I will wait until you get the answers that you need and. Um, I do think we're missing something. But like, I mean, what it is.
Um, I've got everything on all my add-ons covered.
Yep, me too.
Oh, interlocal agreements with the cities where we are, what are we doing? District per class. Um, we have to move on that and I guess it was. I'm hearing that there's confusion on who's working on what and where, so I think we need to have that discussion to. And timelines on when it needs to be done and so.
I have submitted the, uh, draft contracts for the cities to the PA. For a, uh, penny opinion. And, uh, question as to what we do with the ordinance. So I'm just waiting to hear back from the PA.
So nothing that we need to do for now?
That's where we're at. If we are done for the day or close, I had a meeting at four and I. Thought we'd be done and I told them I'll be late and they said we will wait.
Well, with that, uh, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to adjourn so that Lori can make her meeting. Sorry, Mr. Silver.
And I will second.
Alright, motion and a second new discussion, and I feel sorry for you and for missing your meeting, yes.
No, it's.
I've been so busy, I got a message from them that I'm supposed to call this guy and that was the twenty-eighth and I still haven't. Found the time to call this person, so I hope they forgive me as much as.
They, they sent you an email.
Your people are forgiving it. Um, any other discussion on adjourning? No workshop Thursday? Or workshop Thursday? No workshop Thursday?
No workshop Thursday.
No workshop Thursday.
We all have.
Alright, we have a motion to second to adjourn, no workshop, no radio, any discussion? Hearing none, all is a favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Yep, and thank you all for listening to our nine million topics we discussed today.